Call of February 16th, City Council Meeting Order. Commissioner Smith is going to give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please.
Let's assume that we have a prayer. Most gracious and humble God, our Father, we come once again to say thank you for the many blessings that have been stored upon us. Thank you, my Father, for this opportunity to serve in this great city. We ask of God to continue to guide us, and your blessings upon all that we shall say and do. And we pray, oh, my Father, that things that we do will be positive effect to the citizens of this city. We pray these in thy son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The fact of the day. February is Black History Month, an annual celebration of achievements by African-Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. The origins of Black History Month began in 1915 with historian Carter G. Woodson and Minister Jesse E. Woodmoreland. That year, they founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History and associated dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black African-Americans. The organization later became known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. In 1926, the Association started the Negro National History Week and chose the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass as a week to commemorate the achievements of African-American communities. Through the efforts of Woodson and Moreland, schools, communities, colleges organized local celebrations as well as history clubs and performances. In the decades following this historic week, the event grew and evolved into what eventually became known as Black History Month. In 1976, President Ford officially recognized Black History Month, and since then, every American president has designated February as Black History Month with a specific theme. For 2022, the theme is Black Health and Wellness. Fact of the Day.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes, we did.
All right. Look for a motion to remove the two sets of minutes as presented.
So move them.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have a proclamation for the Future Farmers of America Week. And what we'd like to do maybe is we'll read them out. I want to list the schools that are here tonight, represented tonight, and then we're going to come down and get a picture with each of the different schools. So let me tell you who's here tonight. We've got Apopka High School, Cheyenne Mathis, Advisor Melissa Hamilton. We have Wicaba High School, Christine Navarez, Advisor Erin Davis. Apopka Middle School, Allison Wells, Advisor Duncan Sykes. Piedmont Middle School, Jaden Klingensmith, Advisor Vanessa Maxwell. Wolf Lake Middle School, Riley Berger, Advisor Missy Thornton. Ocoee couldn't make it tonight. Windermere High School, Lexi Porter, Advisor Amy Patterson, and the alumni representative, Suzanne Archer, and our own, where's John Clorin over there in the corner too? Yes, from Apopka. So with that, let me read the proclamation, and then we'll come down and get the pictures with each of the different schools. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Future Farmers of America, FFA, in agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems, and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agricultural education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in the science, business, and technology of agricultural education, and whereas the FFA motto, 'Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve,' gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in making the connection to agricultural education, and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation, and whereas FFA chapters have been very active in Apopka and have made many contributions to school and community life. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me, the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim February 19th through February 26th, 2022, to be Future Farmers of America Week." So with that... Why don't we go ahead and we'll get the pictures, and maybe we'll have a couple of comments, maybe from one of a former ag teachers? Come on down first, Apopka High School, if you'll meet us down front, please. Next up, Wicaba High School. Next up, Apopka Middle School. Okay, Piedmont Middle School. Wolf Lake Middle School. Okay, Windermere High School. And then, well, that's right, we've got Ocoee. So I think that's everybody? Is this one? You got it? You got it? Okay, thank you, thank you. Hang on before y'all go, we got Commissioner Smith, I'm sure, wants to say a few things. Being a former FFA teacher, Commissioner Smith, this is your show.
Thank you, Mayor. And it is indeed a pleasure for me to be here to honor and witness the proclamation being given to the FFA in honor of National FFA Week. For four years, I wore the FFA jacket at Apopka High School as a member of the FFA, and then I served 40 years as an FFA advisor to FFA organizations here in Orange County. So I'm proud to see you all tonight and continue to carry on the legacy of the FFA. So we wish you much success in all of your endeavors, and remember that the sky is the ceiling, all right? Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we've got presentation.
Mayor, before you do that, I was going to do this under Agenda Review, but I'm going to do it now if you'll allow me. Before we get into presentations, we have a Commissioner, Commissioner Banksen, that would like to say some words.
Sure, absolutely. Do I need to state my name and address for the record here? It was such an honor to serve, and I wanted to come out here to make this statement as a citizen of the city, as well as the honor to serve there. I believe in the principle of serving, and I believe what Jesus said to his twelve applies to all of us, that the greatest among you will be the servant of all. When service is at heart of what we do, our businesses succeed, our churches succeed, our community succeeds, and we succeed. That's truly been my heart in these last six years as a Commissioner, and my every decision is predicated on the question, what is truly best for the people we serve? As I stand here before my esteemed colleagues, I can say it's been a pleasure to serve together, and though we do not always agree, which I think is healthy, that's good for the process, I believe that when we work together, we truly shine, and that's my pledge to continue to do so. I believe in Apopka and in her future, and I believe we are emerging into a place of leadership in Northwest Orange County and the Orlando Metroplex. Yes, we've grown from the sleepy little town that I met first in 1982, but I believe as we continue to come together, we can retain the core of what has always made us great, a true hometown feel, a love for God and our fellow man, a great place to raise our children, a place that has produced world-class musicians, athletes, educators, aviators, and many more. A place where small business can thrive and big business wants to call home, a place with deep roots and big dreams. We now have a greater opportunity to have a seat at the table and continue to advocate for our future. With each new census, the law mandates a review of the districts based upon the population, and our district has now changed to encompass all of Apopka and the surrounding areas as well. It seems to be a theme of bringing Apopka together. I want to be an advocate not only for Apopka, but for all of Northwest Orange County. So after much consideration and prayer, after first speaking with my family, many of them are here, and after speaking with the congregation that I serve, I thought it fitting to come before you, my colleagues, in the city that's entrusted us, and announce my intention to pursue the Office of State Representative for District 39. I will continue to serve in my role as Commissioner until such time as my new position requires that I step down, but I will never stop serving this community that I love. I want to take that same passion and be our voice in our state's capital, broadening both our reach and our horizons together. With God's help, I will do my best. And you know, there's such a unique, there's times in history that where things seem to converge and come together. I feel like that's happening for us as Apopka, and we've all served, and I believe everyone here serves from the heart. And to me, it's an extension of what I believe we can do, what I see really on our horizon right now, that opportunity that we're seeking for our citizens, especially those in the deepest areas of need, for education, for opportunity, for jobs, different things that I want to be that voice, and I feel like that's the right move. So again, as I stated, that's my heart, and I felt that it was appropriate to first speak to you and let you know that as well, because I value you, and I've come to enjoy our time together, and I will continue to be there until such time as I have to step down. So we've got some more road together, and if you can endure me, let's do it together. All right. Presentation is the Cross Connection Program Update. I guess Dio and Edward are tag teaming this one?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Deirdre Bouda, Public Service Director.
Need to speak louder.
Recently, letter were mailed out to the, out to City of Apopka customer regarding testing of the backflow preventers, and this generate many questions. This Cross Connection Program Update presentation will address the following. It will explain what is a cross connection. It will also explain what is a backflow preventer and why testing is required. It will provide a brief chronology of the city involvement in addressing the Florida Department of Environmental Protection mandate for municipality to comply with their administrative code pertaining to backflow preventer testing. And it will also provide an update, a current status, and our plan as we move forward. So with that, I want to describe what is a cross connection. As you can see, a cross connection is a point in the plumbing system where it is possible for a non-potable substance to come into contact with a potable drink and water supply. Common example of a cross connection include a garden hose submerged into a container with potential contaminated water or a direct connection to a storage reservoir or a well, well water. If this is a possibility of a cross connection, the city require a backflow preventer to protect the main water supply. As you can see from the diagram here, here, this here is one of those backflow preventers. Now, what is a backflow preventer? A backflow preventer protect the city main water supply from contaminants. It stops water from the residential, commercial, or industrial flow from flowing back into the main supply line. So for example, on this picture, in this picture here, you're going to see this is the main supply line that is coming. This has like 75 PSI, and it flows, this is a backflow well preventer, and this is the line in the residential, you know, that supplies water to homes and everything else. These are all elements of what you call cross connections. So basically, when you have, like, for example, in a case like a water main break or fire demand, sometimes the pressure here may be reduced in the mains, in the main supply lines. And if without this backflow preventer, this water can flow backwards because the pressure here may be able to reduce, and here will be at a higher pressure. And the pressure here is 75 PSI after the backflow well preventer, those pressure in our homes is around 65. So basically, there are times when the main supply line, the demand, and this happened very rarely, but for fires and every, so those pressure goes down and the tendency for the water to flow backwards. So without the prevent, a backflow preventers, any contaminant in those lines that you have can flow backwards into the main supply lines. And that is the main purpose of the backflow preventers. Now, the type of residential backflow well preventer here, you can see this is a dual check, and this is a dual check well device. These two, right, are really involved in reclaimed service area. The other one here is pressure vacuum breakers and a reduced pressure. These backflow here are more in portable water service area that are required to have, where residents are required to have backflow well preventers. And you can see out there, we have a demonstration of all those fours that are out there. Now that I'm going to provide to you a chronology of the cross connection program here. Existing FDP rule 65-555.360 was revised and finalized in 2014. There was a drinking waters rule that was existing since 1977, yeah, around those times. Those rule went through revision, amendment from the Florida DEP, change of coding, everything else. It's only in 2014 that we had the existing rule was revised and finalized, where it says that required a submission of annual cross connection well report to begin in 2016. All municipalities, right, would then ask that you need to submit an annual cross connection well report begin in 2016. What happened in 2016 to 2018? The city did not submit any annual report for 2016, 2017, and 2018. FDEP did send us notice, but it did not send us a reminder, right? So as a result, no annual report were ever submitted. What happened in 2020 was, FDEP came out to do the routine audit of our water treatment plan. At that time, one of the employee, right, informed one of the city staff that the 2019 cross connection report has not been submitted. And what staff did, staff submitted that, they went through, they compiled all the information, and they submit that report in 2019 to DEP to comply with their request. Now in 2021, there was a Benyon Road, a severe spillage occurred, and that occurred in May 27, 2021. We had 23,563 gallons of sewage was spilled, and 17,563 gallons of sewage spill was recovered. Due to this, of any spillage, what happened, you usually get an illicit, is a violation of the permit, so usually they get an illicit fine. FDEP then sent us a consent order, and in that consent order, we were able to mitigate that by paying the $500 administrative fee. But also, we registered with them to implement a pollution prevention project to mitigate the fine, in which case we bought an electric vehicle, an electric, and a charging station. So that is what happened in, from the consent order. In that consent order, what happened, this was strictly for the spillage. They then decided to put in that consent order, a reminder for the city, for us, to distribute risk assessment survey to customer, revise the cross connection ordinance and manual, FDEP, and to submit to DEP on December, the 31st, 2021, and also to notify all the resident customer of cross connection testing well requirement. FDEP submitted that in January, the 31st, 2022. Now, this has no relationship to the spillage that took place. It was just what they did, they just add this in the consent order that they provide to the city. So what happened in October 2021, we were beginning to comply with that order. We sent out 24,597 survey was mailed to all of the resident customer, and 1,485 of those survey was received from the residential customer. In December 15, the City of Apopka cross control ordinance and manual were revised and adopted by this board. And in December 2021, we mailed commercial customer notification of testing well requirement. In January 2022, we mailed a portion of residential, well, customer notification of a testing well requirement. What had happened during that mail, we staff inadvertently forget to attach some attachment to some of these letters. So as a result, we received some calls. We asked DEP for an extension for February 11. We then corrected that, and we comply in February 11, all the revised notification of the testing well requirement was mailed out to the resident and to the residential customer. So in summary, city had met all the FDP consent order well requirement. We had the administrative prepaid by the city, electric vehicle for charging station was purchased, we distributed all the risk assessment survey to the customer, we amended the cross connection ordinance and manual, and we notified all the residential customer of cross connection testing well requirement. The city went forward in here. They hire a person by Paula to take in charge of those cross connection permits, and to make sure that all our regulation are met, and to manage that cross connection program and backflow preventer program. So they went forward and entered all of this. Moving forward, we have approved the backflow test contractor has been provided to all customers. So every customer who received those letter from us, receive an approved list of all the backflow test contractor. We also, the residential customer may elect to have the city perform required backflow testing, which runs approximately $60. Repair cost will be, if you need the backflow well preventer to be repaired, the cost will be itemized based on site-specific need. And if you need, if the backflow is not working, and you need a conversion of the backflow well device, that will cost $300. The city will perform the service, and they will be billed in tree insulation. Those were all set up and set up, well, in the letter. One other thing that the city went forward here that we are doing, we are researching some vendors to see if we can purchase in bulk, right, two types of dual backflow well preventers. If, and I think we got a quote, and their run's around $65 now. So if we purchase them in bulk, we can then provide it at cost to the plumber, to the contractor at cost. So in order, it will reduce the cost to the customer, right? Maybe it would be less than the $300 as we stipulated that if the city had to do it, right? And that really conclude this presentation that I have, and we have staff here, myself, and to answer any, well, any question that may arise here.
Questions?
Yeah. So I think, you know, to say that I have not fielded a whole bunch of calls related to this topic, I'd be lying. It's almost daily that I get a note or an email or a telephone call from the public related to this matter. You know, obviously, I think we missed an opportunity to educate people in the mail piece itself. You know, a lot of people got the letter, and, you know, like we had discussed in December, you know, backflow and cross connections, not on the vernacular of a lot of people. And so when they got the letter in the mail... Um, and so when they got the letter in the mail, there was, there was some confusion. The, the idea, so just help me work through this. So the letter and I received one at my house as well. So it says that once the date of certification needs to happen, which on mine, it was March 1st to say was the date to trigger it, and I had to have something done within 14 days. Um, this, the ordinance that we passed, section eight, section 78 to 11, basically says that the backflow has to be certified every two years, right? And then the, the subtext to that basically says devices shall be replaced, or sorry, repaired, retested or replaced within 14 days if they fail to meet performance standards. So what I'm, what I'm questioning is why the urgency in the 14 day period now versus, I'm assuming since we have to submit reports on a quarterly basis to the DEP, that as long as we're showing measured steps to say that we're doing this thing in a, in a measured way, I would think that would satisfy the requirement from, from the Florida DEP. Is it, am I wrong in that thinking?
Right, well, I think in answer to your question, well, the letter set a specific date, but it's a flexible date. We would like the customer to call us back, right? They couldn't meet the deadline, they couldn't get a contractor. We are going to, to change that date and be flexible with them. But we want them to make sure that they at least comply with this because we have to get those notification and to comply with, with the regulation. So despite that we had, I think it was, um, March, the some date on, on that, that letter, we are flexible, but we want them to engage with us. Call us, we, we hired 10 person there, we, we, we would like to engage with them. If they say they cannot meet that deadline or they cannot meet, meet, well, the 14 days, we will work with them. But we want them to get in contact with us so that we can work with them to make sure that they comply.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, you know, the letter that you've, the first letter that you sent out was prior to the February 1st. That's in the consent order. And so everything else in terms of timeline and things like that, I think we were safe in terms of consent. And you, you brought up a point here, talking through the, um, the cost. So Orange County, I think we discussed this in December as well. Orange County just puts $3 on, um, water customers' bills that are applicable for the backflow. That way, it's a pass through cost for the, for the end user, for the resident. And then they don't have to worry about calling, getting the certify, certification set up and taking time out of their day to do it. I would suspect, and I don't know the final numbers for the surveys that were returned, but there's probably a high percentage of people that took the letter that they received and it went in the garbage. And so if we're going to be doing a whole bunch of backflow testing ourselves anyways, why would we not just do it citywide, get the benefit of the economy of scale pricing? And just, I mean, 60 bucks, uh, 60 bucks for a test is $2.50 per paid period. If we have to test it every two years. Can we not still explore that option?
Once you, once you have Paula, once you come up and talk about that, I mean, and Paula retired from Orange County and her position in Orange County was exactly what she's doing for us here at Apopka. And so she's got great knowledge, you know, on, on this issue.
Well, and again, with the, when you say with the county charging it monthly, but the county owns those devices. That's not owned by the customer. They actually own something on the customer's private property. That's why they, that's how they were able to do the, the, get that all in place. I mean, I wasn't up here, but.
Well, but the, the, the point that I'm making is you're going to have a high volume of people that don't do this on their own. They're not going to proactively go out and test their, their devices. And the way that our manual is published or approved, it basically says if they don't do that, they're going to get done in letters to say, hey, you haven't done it, you need to do it. You're going to get another letter at an increased cost to the city again. And then if they still don't do it, then we go out there at the cost of either the city or a third party to do the testing, and then we build it back to there. So if we're doing that anyway as an option, why would we not just do it citywide and just get the economies of scale again for the price?
Well, I mean, back when this was all decided, we didn't want to be the owner of the device. There was liabilities involved there. And it's always been that the customer has been responsible for saying anything past the meter. So, I mean, I, I worked with what I had. Um, earlier when you were talking about the 14 days, my experience has been if they get it tested and I don't get it, get it in, I never get it, and then I'm chasing tests. So that's why it said, you need to give us, within 14 days, I need to receive the test that was done. Just because, you know, do I know you've done it or not? I mean, how long does it take to send in an email? That's, that was that 14 day question that.
Yeah, but everybody, well, all the people that I spoke to interpreted as it needed to be done within 14 days. And what's happened is that a lot of the providers, a lot of the certification companies are getting bogged down and they don't have the bandwidth to, to meet the demand of the residents here in Apopka.
The letters that went out recently is, has a March 18th due date. So it has the ones, the, the second ones, um, that came from Enco, from the.
Yeah, I guess the point being is if everybody apply, subscribe to that and said, hey, I'm going to meet that March 18th deadline, A, you have a supply issue.
Right.
Of the companies that are able to even do it. And then B, we're marching to a deadline that's not, that I can see mandated anywhere in our consent order or our manual or ordinance change.
It's not, I had to send all the letters out. And so if I had said, okay, well, we'll do a 10th, it's only got a 30 days. And another 10th that has 60 days and then 90 days, those people that had a due date of July 3rd, they're, they're never going to do it, they're going to forget it by then. And I have talked with, I sent an email to all the vendors. I said, all they have to do is ask me for an extension so they've got breathing room so they can structure when they come. Like they might come to Apopka for two days so they can still keep, um, you know, service to their regular clients. Um, so, and like I say, we've, we've done the research, we've talked to our supplier for the dual checks, and we are going to offer them at our cost. And although there's been other, uh, there's two other places that they're saying they're getting them.
So maybe this is a question for the attorney, Mr. Rodriguez. Is the ownership dynamic between Orange County and say, the City of Apopka, does that bear in any decision-making process that we might take as a council to say, hey, let's just take ownership of this, bill our clients and just do the certification testing?
It is your, it would be your prerogative whether you wish to amend the code to have it so that you want to emulate the county's program or the city takes ownership. Now, are you looking at transitioning into purchasing how many thousands of backflow preventers for the entire city? For every resident of the city? And advise every resident that the, the city is going to come onto their property to install a device. And then at that point now comes issues of liability. Um, if there's a, you know, do we end up with an issue where we have liability issues because something may happen on someone's private property on, on an item that is titled to the city and which, you know, it's, it's on private property without necessarily a control oversight of the city? And those are the issues that we raise and we're concerned. And when we look at its, or Orange County is the outlier when it comes onto the issue of who owns these, these devices. If you look at all the other municipalities, um, it is the property owner's responsibility to have the device and the property owner's responsibility to main, to maintain the device. So if it is the council's prerogative to emulate Orange County and to take title, then we're looking at, you're, you're going to have to look at a schedule of how of transitioning all of these devices within the city. And if I'm going to go by the number of how many surveys we sent out, we're looking over 24,000 devices that are now going to have to be purchased by the city, installed by the city. And, um, and then in those, that's, so that's one of the things we were, we, you know, needed to weigh when looking at the ordinance. And that was not an aspect that was amended from, from the prior ordinance. The ordinance that was adopted, it was not a wholesale overhaul. And we were not asked by DEP to overhaul our ordinance. Um, the aspect of the devices being owned by the, being by the resident, that was in our prior ordinance and that carried over to the, to the current ordinance. Having to change it to a public ownership would have been a, a complete change to what the current requirements are. And it would have differed us from Okoe and a lot of the other municipalities that we reviewed when looking at doing amendments to the, to our cross connection ordinance.
Yeah, and, and I'm not necessarily suggesting that we should purchase and install new devices. I think it may be a hybrid effect there of doing the certifications. And then if they, if it does fail, then it would be on the homeowner's responsibility to replace that device. Um, but I'm just, I'm just trying to be a realist here. You know, I'm, I'm assuming that a majority of people are not going to do the testing themselves. And so if, if we get a benefit of lower cost at the same time and we can do that as a service to our residents, at least the certification side of the house. And then if there's any issues, then it's on the responsibility of the homeowner to, to replace the backflow preventer.
And I think it's a little bit early to say everybody's going to choose us because it's been five days and we've gotten over 175 tests in already. Those, those, the, the, uh, private vendors have been very responsive. So, but it's so new, I, I can't give you percentages.
Commissioner, one of the things, you know, I've, we've, I've had a, obviously, a number of conversations. One is, you know, have each of the HOAs pick them up. I mean, they could, they could contract with one plumber to do their whole neighborhood. And that would be a, a way to reduce the cost because obviously they can go from house to house to house. They can get a better, a better deal than that same plumber going, you know, one, two in this neighborhood and four in the next neighborhood and so on. So, and one thing, Paula, if you just kind of, I, I know, because you just retired last year from, from Orange County, give us a, a sense of what, I know that they're only charging $3 a month for Orange County, but you're, you're pretty certain that's not the number. Any idea what you think that number would be if we were to take on? I, I know, I'm, I'm not trying to put you in a, in a difficult position.
Wow, um, I, well, I'll tell you, I really think they, they're kind of in the, in the red because they were having staff go out and test. They've got vendors, but we were still going out to test and doing stuff. I mean, which, I mean, you know, all of a sudden, oh, the, the contract's used up and we can't finish. I can't speak to that, I just, $3 is really low when you're talking about the parts and, and of course, just testing. Our overhead is not going to be what someone who has to feed a family on. And we're, we've got the guys, although you'd have to hire people. So it's back and forth, but yeah, it's, it's, it's a half an hour to do a test if the, if the device is accessible, which most of these are not. So you're cutting sod off the top of the, the top of the box, cleaning it out, hooking up your meter because of course, everything's below ground. And then if it fails, you, you, you know, you've spent all that time and then you've got to do the repair. So, and it's, it's so iffy. But I, I think 60, 50 maybe because it's us and we get breaks on everything. Um, but the testers are, uh, some of them, they started at 45 and they went up to 55 just because they've got to dig for a half an hour. And that's not what they normally do. They normally have their meter and a screwdriver and they go test the device. They don't normally have to take the sod off and, and then take the sand from around it. Now, in two years, it won't be, it would be easy to test because it won't fill back up in, in, I mean, some, but not, not to that extent. So, but it, it's really dicey to, I don't want to, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't want to say.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, and really, it's, it's a matter of the council opinion, right? I mean, but you're saying iffy on the cost, but $60 is put right there, so that's $2.50 a month.
Like I said, we didn't want to be.
Is, I mean, is that figure accurate?
That figure is an average of what we polled the vendors. Because, yeah, I mean, I'm getting paid, I'm working, I'm getting paid anyway. I can go do a test and I can say, okay, well, we'll only charge you 20 bucks. But that's not fair to the customer, the guys who are in business to do that. We know, we, we already said from the beginning, we weren't going to try to be in competition with the local vendors.
So, um, I guess the last point to make is though, just for the general public, the people that are in this room, the people that are watching or the people that will continue to call us, the 14 days is not a firm and fast.
No, that's just, like, if I give you a month and 14 days after that month, I haven't got a test, I, I need to contact you to see, did you do it in that period of time? Or did you do it and your tester didn't send it to me? So then I'll go to them and get it. But I have to have it to update my records to be able to put it on that report to send it to EP.
Commissioner Smith?
So I guess my question is, how many certified backflow testers does the City of Apopka have?
There were about a dozen that have worked here locally in this area.
No, I mean, that's employed by the city.
Say that again, employed by the city?
Yes.
Oh, well, I mean, I have a, I have a license, I mean, I have a certification. There's probably four or five of us that have certifications to test. But the, the list are the private vendors because, because.
Okay, but, but we have four or five that's employed by the city.
Well, I know there's at least three and, yeah, I think there's about five. Is there six? Okay, there's six. That's why I forgot about George.
All right, and so can any plumber perform these tests? Or do they have to have a different certification?
They have to be certified, they have to be, the plumbing license does not supersede the backflow certification. Just because, like, I have a, I have a, I have a license in water treatment. And so it supersedes a distribution license. But just because he's a plumber doesn't mean he can test.
Just because he's a plumber doesn't mean he can test, all right.
And he can install.
He can install, but he can't test.
Like he can install a dual check that doesn't get tested anyway.
All right, then, then my next question is, uh, I see that it says that if the city performed the services, it's going to be built in three equal installments.
If, yeah, if, if they have to go all the way to a, a dual check, that larger amount of money, that $300.
Oh, that's not for the $60?
No.
So if the city performed the test, they're going to have to pay that $60 all at one time?
Of course, there's already a mechanism in the bill payment system that they can make payments, right? I mean, they can call utility billing and say, I need to make payments.
All right, so they have the option to call and say they're making payments. Okay, uh, but, but I guess, um, I've gotten emails that, uh, some of these certified inspectors have gone out and some of them want to charge $250 opposed to the 60. And then one even told them that the device need to be above ground, so it's going to cost them $1,000.
Yeah, that sounds like a plumber, but yeah.
So how do we clean out the weeds?
We did, you know, I've heard that, that is not, it does not have to be above ground. What these guys have said was because it's underground and it's dirty and it was wet, now you've got more repairs on the inlet and outlet shut off valves because the grit gets in there. But no, they don't have to be above ground. I mean, Orange Counties are all below ground too.
And I think we'll, we'll also, I think we'll be real, you know, if we hear that there are plumbers out there gouging, then we'll, we'll take them off the list.
One has already been removed from the list.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Banks?
That was my question, same thing. I, I think we probably all get similar emails, uh, how do we protect the citizens? They're being forced to do something by a regulation now to protect themselves. And there ought to be some way to cap so that they're not gouged. I don't know if we just were on the lookout and that's the only way to deal with it. But I, I, I mean, I kind of agree in the sense of having something to be spread out that a citizen say, you know what, I want the city to go ahead and handle it, bill me this much every month. I'm not in favor of owning them, as you said, I think we have a liability issue there. But I, I think it would be a lot more affordable for some, knowing, okay, 60 bucks extra this month is no big deal. But for others, it's, it's, even that can be a challenge. So I think there's got to be a way that we could spread it out. And I don't know if we could do it a per month basis on something like that.
Mayor, can I make a comment? Let me, um, let me say this, so you, so it'll be clear too, I think it's important. That, one of the reasons, of course, as you know, we've hired Paula to run this program, but we have also hired a, um, some help for her with the phones. Because we want to make sure we can answer all the calls and, and, and not let any slip through. So we're answering calls. I know Paula and her group were spending a lot of time working with, as much time as we need for each person, explaining the process, explaining the payment plans. We have a meeting at the city, the city staff has a meeting on Friday to talk about the payment process and how we will do this. Keep in mind, we, we say three installments for the $300 or whatever those fees may be. But we do have a mechanism in utility billing that allows us to do longer periods of time where we, they can sign an agreement and extend that out. And because we have that for some people for their water bills. Some people, you know, if they have a big water bill one month or whatever, and, and we've allowed them to, to make payments over time. So we do have all those mechanisms in place. So if someone does call and needs a little more time or whatever, then the utility billing department can give them a longer time to make those payments, as long as they sign those agreements and stay within those payment plans. So we have all the mechanisms in place to help with that. And that's one of the things that we're really working on, is to try and do everything we can to help take some of that, that pressure off of the, the customer or the citizen. You know, we'll work with them in any way we can. And so I know Paula and them are taking lots of calls, spending lots of time listening, trying to educate, trying to answer them, and then also give, do the, do the best thing that we can for, for each one of them. So I think it's good, it's important that the public knows. And something we probably need to make sure we put on our website with this presentation needs to go there as well, but that we need to put on there that they can call us for anything. So don't feel pressured or whatever, you know, if you have a problem with your vendor or whatever, call Paula and let her work through, um, whatever the issues may be.
Yeah, I would just like to see an option, if citizens would like that, to say, you know what? If it's a $60 payment, I'll opt into that. And then anything that's found that, you know, is the, the larger cost, that will go back to them and we work with them on how to cover that. But I just think that would be a much easier way for our people to be able to deal with that. Again, not purchasing the unit outright. If they agree, yes, once a year. If they agree, yes, once a year, or once every other year, please cover this and spread it out on my bill, I, I think it would be a lot less painful and a lot less hassle for a lot of people. And then others still have the option, nope, I want to do it and here's my test and I'm good.
So I would like to get that right.
So do, do we have, because I've gotten a lot of calls from neighbors just on the block that I live. The first question is, where's the backflow? And so I, you know, I don't know whether to say the right side of the house, the left side of the house, it's underground, it's in the back, it's in the front. How, how do we identify those homes? It's, let me just say Rock Springs Ridge, where is that backflow?
Okay, so I try to let them visualize it. One side, you have a purple meter on one side of your property line at the street. And they usually say, yeah. Then you have the black meter, the black box on the other, and it has a round disc about five inches round, and that's the, actually the transmitter. So that is your water meter. And on the customer's side, within three feet, you'll find a second black box. It may be covered over with grass, and, but you can find it, and that's, that's the box that your backflow device is in.
So one of the neighbors had asked, she didn't know that, she's a widow. She doesn't really trust a vendor to come in and be truthful or, she's, you know, she's got some issues where she would probably be one of the customers who would prefer the city to come out and do it.
Right, and we've had some.
So are you organizing a schedule where I can at least give those residents the option of, you don't have to go to an outside vendor, you can rely on the city to come and take care of that and make an appointment?
Right.
Is, are you?
We are. We've started a list.
Okay.
Until it all shakes out, I need to see everybody so then I can schedule it effectively. You know, not just, because, like, I'll order it by street so that we're doing it by street or by subdivision instead of, well, this guy called first and he's over here and this one called first, and so we're driving all around. We need to, once it all gets shaken out and everybody's, you know, said, yes, we want you in a month or so, because then I have to decide, I got two guys. Or do we go to a designee, which is what is in the ordinance and in the Cross Connection Control Manual? But the designee would be, would be using our prices. They'd have to agree to that.
Okay, so they would be using the services of the city?
Yes.
So now, as you schedule them, of course, many of them are going to be waiting for you to come to their homes to do this inspection. But then you have a lot of residents who are worried about, am I going to make the date that I'm required to have it inspected?
When, when they talk to us and we say, you're on the list, you forget about that due date, you've already contacted with us. Basically, it's just like, if they've contracted with, with a vendor and they needed an extension, it's automatic extension as long as they've contracted or hired or whatever you want to say.
Right.
They made an appointment with us. And so, yep, it's on us now. So don't you worry about it.
So will you be issuing on the website, what, what happens to the person that doesn't have access to the website? How will they know that they have access to the city for this service?
Well, the letter says that they can choose us. It says if you, or we'll, we'll come in if you don't do anything, but most of them are calling and saying, well, it says if I don't do anything, you're going to come. Can I just choose you? Sure.
Is, is there a number in that letter?
Oh, yeah.
That's our, that's our number.
Okay, yeah, well, you know, I didn't.
And the website is, is the cross connection website's there as well.
Okay, so then I'll do that because I, those are the, the inquiries that I did get. A lot of the neighbors were like, where's the backflow? And a lot of them don't want to go to outside vendors because they've already kind of read that some vendors charged, are charging, you know, over a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. So if they have the option of the city where they straight sixty dollars.
For the test, yes.
Then, for the test, and, and they can work with the utility if they can't afford to pay the sixty up in one, okay. So that gives me an option for those residents.
But people are going to see this video and then just say, I'm just going to go through the city. So that's what I'm saying is, like, why would not everybody pick that option? Throw away the volatility of pricing if we're saying sixty bucks, you get it certified?
Sixty, as average, some are doing forty-five.
But like for the city though, I mean, with Commissioner Velazquez's question just now, we said, if they schedule through the city, they pay sixty bucks and they get it certified, they're on a schedule, and they're in compliance.
That's their option, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And I have one, one last question for our older residents, and I mean, older construction and older homes. Where there is no, I want to make sure I got that right, talking about the house. Where, where, where there is no backflow for vendors, how are we going to handle that?
Okay, so now, if they got a letter, then they've got a device. I mean, there's, the majority, ninety-nine, well, probably ninety percent, we're all in reclaimed areas. We don't drop a water meter because it's cowed unless there's a backflow device. If there's, if they're having, you know, a lot of people, you're right, people have put in irrigation systems on potable side, with, using potable water in the older system, in older parts of the city, and we didn't even know it. I mean, they might not have pulled a permit. So we've got to get this done first, and then we'd just have to do, that's what I had to do first in, in Orange County, boots on the ground, walk in. We'd take a street and anytime we saw sprinkler heads, make the note, talk, knock, 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 and verify that there is a device or not a device, and explain, you know, you are, you are going to have to do an installation. That's, that's new installs is what you're talking about. How are we going to catch those?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and I guess, now you're saying, if they have irrigation, they need a backflow for them, but if they don't have irrigation?
Correct.
They don't need a backflow.
Correct. There's, there's no, there's no potential of cross connection if there's not another's water system.
If, if you had a hose bib on the outside, you'd have to have a?
The hose bib, vacuum breaker, yes.
Back, back breaker.
But that's.
It's supposed to.
Well, most, and, most builders put it on.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any?
Yes, I was just going to say for clarification, just because we sent out twenty-four thousand letters, it's only those who have irrigation systems, correct?
Yes.
And I know for mine, I don't have a second black box, mine is up above ground by my house when we put it in.
Because you irrigate with potable?
Back in ninety-seven, so.
You irrigate with potable?
But I did send in the letter that I.
Right.
Had that, so. Okay.
Good. Everybody's questions answered?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, well, thank you, Paula, thank you, D.O., Edward. Okay, agenda review. Edward, any changes?
Nope, there are no changes, Mayor.
All right. Got staff recognitions, these are the five-year pins that each of the department heads will get, so a lot of five-year employees, so excited to be able to recognize them. Excuse me, these are fifteen-year, fifteen-year, I'm sorry, fifteen years of service. We've got Gregory Everenanny, police officer, five years. We've got Sean Devaney, police officer, five years. We've got Joe, Joel D. Van Shack, five years, police officer. We've got Denoy Atulis, five years, sanitation equipment operator. We've got Donnie Roland, five years, athletic maintenance foreman. Parks superintendent. We have James Hitt, five years, community development director. Darrell Latimore, five years, utility service worker one. We've got Natalie Aiman, five years, police officer. We've got Darrell Latimer Jr., utility service worker two, sanitation equipment operator. We've got Shen, Shantavis Bornay, communication technician, five years, lead communications technician. We've got Danielle Murray, maintenance worker one. We've got Nordstrom, Aaron Nordstrom, Ben Nordstrom, communication technician, five years. We've got Tyler Goff, maintenance worker one, utility service worker two. We've got Justin Lemieux, police officer, five years. We've got Jennifer Pyburn, five years. We've got Oscar Santos, firefighter first class. We've got Mason Mayhar, maintenance worker one, maintenance worker two, utility service worker two, sanitation equipment operator. We've got Colton Robertson, five years, maintenance worker one, maintenance worker two, equipment mechanic trainee, equipment mechanic. We've got Aaron Geroldi, police officer, five years, lead police officer. Lauren Hart, police officer, lead police officer for five years. Brian Shorels, police officer. Timothy Wallace, police officer, five years. Juan Muniz, maintenance worker one, utility service worker one, five years. Derek Clark, lift station mechanic, five years. Antonio Strickland, wastewater plant operator A, five years. Anthony Burke, five years, park, parks worker northwest. We've got Janine Anderson, records clerk, five years, communication technician. We've got Draymond Wilson, firefighter first class, fire engineer, five years. We've got Sean Saikoka, firefighter first class, five years. We've got Ryan Hobbit, first class firefighter, five years. Anthony Cavodar, Cavodar Systems Administrator, five years. Nathan Clark, five years, computer support specialist. Alfredo Martinez Jr., five years, utility service worker two. So all, those are all of our five-year employees and we're so proud of the, the staff we have here at a Popka and we couldn't do it without them. So thank you all for what you do. All right, next up, public comments. Susan?
My name is Pamela Ripley and I live at ten thirty-seven Mill Run Circle. I appeared before you last month with two concerns. The first one was that I hadn't been paid for repairs for my irrigation system when it was damaged during the Sheila Oaks Drainage Improvement Project. I did receive the payment, but today I was accused of having the city pay for the entire repair of my irrigation system instead of the portion that was just damaged. I want to state that I clearly instructed the irrigation company to separate the repairs that were, that were required to be made in the area that was affected by the city's project, and I provided a detailed invoice showing the exactly the repairs that were made in that area. I paid for all the repairs that were done for my system outside of the, outside of the area that was damaged by the city. So I can provide invoices to show that I paid seventeen hundred dollars myself while the city only, only paid five hundred and sixty dollars for those repairs. I was, I do take offense that the inference that I presented anything but an accurate invoice to the city. My second and major concern was that I had not had any communication from the insurance company regarding the claim I failed in October, I filed in October for damages resulting from the flooding of my house in two thousand and nineteen. I had sent follow-up emails to John's Eastern in December volunteering to provide information and reports, photographs and documentation to assist, to assisted processing the claim. I received no response, which is why I came to last month's meeting. I was worried that the claim would be denied again with no investigation. I was, I was assured by Mr. Bass that he would contact the insurance company the next day. The very next afternoon, I got a letter dated January fifth, two weeks prior to the meeting denying the claim, with no communication from the insurance adjuster previous to that. Although he thanked me for my cooperation, I had never had any communication with the gentleman who sent me the letter. I immediately called Mayor Nelson and Administrator Bass to ask for a meeting and why I had received a two-week-old letter denying my claim, especially since we had discussed it at the meeting the previous evening. They agreed to meet me, but only if it was a recorded meeting. Since I felt somewhat intimidated to go to a recorded meeting on my own, I initiated and brought an attorney with me. So at the meeting, I was informed it didn't have to be recorded after all. The irrigation system repair chargers were called into question, and then I was denied, continued to deny liability for my paper damages. I don't know why I was brought into this meeting, Mayor Nelson, when it had no purpose. A Popka's been my home since nineteen eighty-four. My husband and I built our first home here and moved in just before Christmas. Our son was born in nineteen eighty-nine and he came to these chambers with his scout troop, met Mayor Land, and we grew up here, he grew up here. We were happy for many, many years, up until two thousand and eighteen, when the flooding problem started. In two thousand and nineteen, when our entire home flooded, our lives were totally upended, as you all know. We were forced out of our home for ten months. I lost my husband to cancer before I moved back home. Our experience, our community continued to flood throughout two thousand and twenty. My neighbors and I had to fight to make the drainage improvement project happen. It wasn't an easy task. I spent countless hours on research, sending emails, pleading for something to be done. I laid over sixty sandbags around my house three days before I had hip replacement surgery. I had to live with sandbags around my house, keep electronics and valuables off the floor. Every time it rained, I had watched the door because, to make sure I wasn't going to flood again. The drainage consultant study that was performed, plus other evidence, showed that the stormwater system caused the flooding. My, my stress level's been off the charts. My life's been a living hell. And, and it's been due to the, the struggles and lack of support from the city and you. It's frustrating because I know the city's got tens of millions of dollars sitting in the bank. They spent four million dollars on Cape Weewa, they expect to operate at a loss. But people like me and my neighbors who have lost, who have lost money, have lost property because of storm, storm sewer systems are, are left on the side. This is the third time my, my claim was denied without any investigation. Now, no one has contacted me for further, further information. I don't know if that's how all insurance claims are handled, if, without any benefit of any investigation, but I don't know what I've done to deserve this treatment because I've suffered both financially, emotionally, physically. But I'm sixty-seven years old. I don't deserve this treatment. I don't deserve to be pushed aside, and I don't, and I don't like my integrity being called into question because I did present proper invoices to the city for that irrigation repair, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
When did you meet with?
Today.
Oh, you met with them today?
Yes.
So is there merit to the, the idea that, Mr. Bass, were you going to contact the insurance company to find out what, what was going on? And did we make that call?
Yes, Commissioner, for, for you and for the rest of the city council. I want, I want to, to kind of give you a little update because I've been working really, really hard with Pam through this whole process. And first and foremost, let me tell you that when the insurance company, when, when our insurance company, when someone files a claim with our insurance company, the city's out of it. We can't get involved in that process. So the insurance company does their, whatever they do. I know they've asked for data, they've asked for information, they ask for reports. They may follow up, they may not, but at the end of the day, the insurance company will make their call and they will either accept the claim, get with the city and tell us what we need to do, or deny the claim. So on that portion of the, of the process, there's not a whole lot we can do that we can, all I can do is, is tell the insurance company, please make sure you follow up with our citizen, with our customer, and make sure that you, you know, do everything you need to do in your process. One of the things that's, that I find interesting in this situation is, so when, when Pam came to the meeting on January the twentieth, and I, because I had, I did not know that she had not received the denial, that she had not received any letter, because the insurance company hadn't said anything to us. A lot of times they don't, they will communicate with the, with the individual first and then they will, you know, get with us. So the letter was dated January the fifth, when I, I did, after that meeting, like I told you, after the meeting on the twentieth, I went the next day and I got with Christie, our risk person, and I said, you need to get with the insurance company and find out what's going on, why Pam hasn't received her letter. So she got with the insurance company because Pam came in that day, that next day, the exact, the day after this council meeting, to file out her paperwork so that we could take care of the irrigation issue that we took care of on the damages, the part that, that were damaged. So we took care of that, and then we called the insurance company to tell them, hey, what, what's going on? Have you communicated? Why haven't you communicated? Well, they did, they sent a letter out dated January the fifth, they mailed a letter out, and apparently Pam had not received that letter as of the twentieth, but the next day, the twenty-first, when she left us and went home, apparently she had received, she got the letter dated January the fifth. So the insurance company did send out a second letter because we, you know, that, like I said in that meeting, I'd go back, we'll tell them to, to follow up. So they did send a second letter and she got that second letter as well. So they did send a second letter and she got that second letter as well. So that's the process and that, that's how it all works and we've done everything from the city's side that we can do. So, I mean, if, and, and Michael can speak to the legal side, we usually, if we get a denial from our insurance company and our insurance company tells us, hey, we feel good about this, we're confident about this from the city's liability side, that's what we usually go with or work through. And then from that point, you know, attorney would take over.
Yeah, the only gray area that I have is, so, and again, not to put words in anybody's mouth, but, so you get the denial letter, is it exhaustive in terms of why it was denied? And who would they have, who would they have spoken to, either at the city level or Ms. Ripley's level, to say, you know, were there any other facts that were presented?
So.
Or is it just up to the, the adjuster to go out there and do a self-assessment without any other knowledge?
It's up to the adjuster. And so I think this was the third time, I think that they.
The first time I got it was immediately after the first flood and they told, they didn't give me any reasons. They said the reasons were proprietary and they had no reason, they couldn't give me any reasons and they weren't obliged to give me any reasons. So there was no way to appeal it because they said they didn't have to give me any reasons and the man was quite rude. It was a different insurance company and he refused to, to, to deal with me any longer. So then after we came up with the, the drainage consultant report and I saw how the wording in there showed that there were some, some problems with the systems and it pretty clearly showed that there were some issues with the system then why my, my house flooded, I said, okay, this is why I should file for review because it pretty clearly showed there were some issues that caused the flooding. So that's when I asked for, to have the claim reviewed. I sent it in, I got one, two-word response saying thank you and I sent other emails. I never, the person who sent me the denial letter, I never even heard of before. Never had any communication with anybody from the company, never asked for, for any additional information. I sent emails, volunteering photos, documents, reports, anything they wanted, nothing. So they never contacted me, never made any onsite visits, never asked for any information. In my initial email, I, actually my father was having spinal surgery, so I only sent them some information. I said that I would be happy to provide additional information because this was just the beginning stages and I was dealing with my father and nothing, nothing. So I don't know how they, and I, actually I received a letter, a denial letter before that with no contact whatsoever before they even, and you called me and warned me I was going to get a letter denying it before, before I even sent anything over. Nothing. I, I got the original denial letter before anything was even started. So, I mean, that's why I'm wondering if they automatically deny claims because the first denial came without anything being sent in by me.
So, so my, my question is, our insurance company, or the city's insurance company, who are they?
Johns Eastern.
Okay. And when a, when a claim is denied, do they send an explanation to the city to say why the claim was denied? Do they send an explanation?
We usually get the same letter that the, that the individual gets. We get the same letter that the individual gets.
So.
So.
But how does anyone appeal their denial? And, I mean, aren't they liable to send something written that says why it was denied? Who gets that?
I can't speak for the insurance company, also will not want this matter. We're currently now in a public comment period. Also, she has hired an attorney. So at this point, any questions, issues, discussions regarding liability? The matter is now in, in legal hands. I would advise to cease any discussions in regards to liability as this matter may result in litigation. So at this point, that my, my advice would be to not discuss matters of, of liability or denial liability because the property owner has sought and obtained legal counsel.
All right.
Well, I did bring him with, I haven't paid him anything because I was asked to come to a recorded meeting and I was questioned why I had to come to a recorded meeting when, why was the meeting going to be recorded in the first place? I mean, are all meetings recorded when they come to you for, to, for, for a question and answer session?
Well, Michael, you should have said something before we started asking questions.
Well, but we're, I was allowing the questions, but, but because that question was pointed, pointed to the scope of liability, it is at that point where I, I am advising the council because the property owner has, came to the city with legal counsel, I have an obligation to advise that, that there may be communications that have to be council to council, and I mean council, C-O-U-N-S-E-L, that issues in regards to liability because this may be potential issues in potential litigation, I had advised that we not step into issues in regards to potential liability or issues regarding liability.
Okay, all right. I just, I felt it was necessary to update you since this has happened last month and what I thought, what was going to happen, happened. Because that was my fear when I came here in desperation last month, that I hadn't heard anything and that my, I was going to get a denial without investigation and the very next day, a letter came doing exactly that. So, and then I was just a little upset that I was accused of, of overcharging the, the city for my irrigation repair. And I can show you invoices of what I paid for my irrigation repair, which was three times what the city paid for their portion. And I can assure you that I didn't charge the city for more than what the damages were when they put in the system. So.
So are we allowed to ask where the accusation came from if they're not giving her a reason? Is that anything? It's kind of frustrating.
I just don't, I just don't know why we have to go this far. Why, I mean, I'd just like to settle this. I mean, I don't want to go legal action. I mean, I don't see the necessity to go legal action. It's just a claim against the city. The, the city has insurance. Why is it have, why, why am I being put through this? Is my question.
So is it, does she have to prove to the insurance company about?
Matter's been referred to the insurance company. The insurance company has denied liability and rejected the claim. So at this point now, it is up, if the property owner wishes to dispute it or proceed forward. She has obtained legal counsel and, and at this point, that's where we're at in the process.
Okay. So there's no way for me personally to, to appeal the decision with, with the insurance company? Because they have not even, see, my, my problem is the procedure the insurance company takes. They do not do any type of investigation. In three denials, they've not done any investigation. And I think the city needs to be aware of that. Their insurance company does no investigation when they deny a claim. And I'm not the only person, I've talked to a neighbor who had the same thing happen. They had an issue with the, with the city, no investigation and they had a claim denied immediately. So I'm not the only one this has happened. And they had people from the fire department back up their issue with, with the city. So I don't know if this is the typical thing with the, with the insurance company that the, the city uses, but I think that's something that bears investigation besides my case. So.
I'd like a follow-up meeting with staff. We can discuss it then.
Thank you.
Susan?
Hello, everyone. Okay. So my name is Joanna Violante and I live at Charter Oaks subdivision at 656 South Christiana Avenue. I'm the president of our homeowners association. And yesterday, we sent a full text of our petition that we want to enter today as well to, to the city council. And this petition is as follows, that we, the undersigned residents of Apopka, have abiding concerns about Southwick Commons Apartments proposed for development at 461 East 7th Street. That's right there at the corner of 6th Street and Alabama Street. And we also have a lot of concerns about how possible changes in the Apopka's center development agreement would impact our future projects in the city center. And we are very much opposed to any actions to amend this standards and design conditions. It's the number nine and it states that all residential apartments or townhomes shall be developed as luxury or upscale. And there's also a number 34 permitted uses, which states that residential multifamily be non-subsidized and at market rent. So we are asking that no variances be granted that would compromise or diminish these articles now or in the future. We're making this formal petition to the city council and staff and asking you to observe the following. We would like for you to hold fast to the original vision of Apopka City Center for the safe, walkable, attractive hometown and friendly family destination. We also would like to keep and fulfill the spirit and purpose of the original 2016 developmental agreement. We would like to enforce the authority of the 2020 amended and restated agreement. And we would like to avoid long-term harm to the city of Apopka and its constituents. To be clear, we're not opposed to development on this property, providing that it's done in a way that would enhance the lifestyle of our neighborhood and support the overall concept and of course, the original purpose of the Apopka City Center. But know that subsidized multifamily apartments are not the type of development that the residents were promised during the visioning Apopka process way back in 2016. And right now, we have about 38 residents from Charter Oaks, 6th Street, Tilden Avenue, even Alabama Avenue, who have signed our petition. We have others who want to sign, but we haven't connected with them yet. So what we will do is we will continue gathering signature, voicing our concerns until a public hearing is scheduled on this proposed development. And I hope that we are being heard and we would like to make sure that you, as the staff and city council, are prepared and aware so that if anything comes up that we're not aware of, that you stand by us and do the right thing for the residents. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And would you like this?
This is our petition. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Erica Hoyt, 2876 Cedar Crest Drive. I have a couple more questions about the backflow valve. Really appreciate everybody's explanation, that was very helpful. I did receive the letter that had a nice explanation and a lot of neighbors pitched in with their explanations, but yours, that was wonderful. Is this device, is it just for reclaimed water, the non-drinking water?
No. It's, it's if you have either reclaimed water or you have irrigation using potable water. Either or.
I have two. I have a purple box and a black box.
Then you, then you have reclaimed water.
Yes.
So you have to have a backflow.
Okay, not a problem.
Yes.
So is this at all a safety feature for the prevention of contamination for drinking water?
Correct. Yeah, it goes back to, I mean, there's a lot of misinformation out there about how this, how it works or how water can get contaminated. So as long as you have a pressurized water system, so you're above 50 or 60 pounds, there's absolutely no way that you're going to get contaminants into the water supply. Okay? The only, only way that you can get contaminants in the water supply, if the system, the potable water, water system fails, so it, it goes to zero water pressure, then you have the ability, not, not that it could happen, you still got to have a, a leak in the pipe so they could suck this bad water, bad chemicals, whatever, into the pipe that would then be pushed back into the, the water system. So it's not a, and when you, when that happens, when you have a water break, you get a, a water boil notice.
Right.
So you, we've got the, this is almost like a, a triple check on making sure we have a, a safe water, drinking water standard. So, you know, the, we've got the, the checks and balances and this is just that, the, the third check on, on making sure that the water in your line is always safe and, and clean.
Okay. And I, I also am aware the quality drinking water reports are publicly available. So we, we know we do have that for confirmation. And another point of clarification, for the city to do the work, is it $60 for the test?
Yes.
Okay. And then in my letter, it just, it said the up to $300 to change the device out, which it almost sounds like we might need to do if, because the device here, $300, but it doesn't have to be tested except for every two years.
Well, there's a, there's a five-year one as well, there's a, that you just have it, just change out every five years, which I think when you talk about testing, might even be a better, a better option. And so what we probably need to do, Edward, is, is, and with Paula and, and Dio is, and George is maybe look at bringing on a couple of extra people and just, it sounds like the, the council thinks we're going to get a lot more people that want us to do the, the testing. I mean, we could also, if we needed to bring on two more people to, you know, obviously have to come back for a budget amendment to, to take that on. But, I mean, I've never wondered, want to compete with the private sector, so, I mean, if, if the private sector will do the, the right job at the right price, I'd rather them make a buck than us, you know, take that, that responsibility on. But, but if, if that's what we need to do, we'll do it.
Okay. And I know, obviously, this is all public record, so anyone, we can always refer them back to the YouTube video for this when they have questions. I would love to see the, on the city website.
Yes.
I was able to look up the backflow, whatever, on the city website. It would be wonderful if we could have some updates after some of the discussion from tonight, especially that flexibility of the March 18th date.
Yes.
I would love to have a nice little easy way to sign up with city of Apopka, just to let.
Easy button.
You got it. You got it with that email confirmation, not a problem.
Yeah.
I also greatly appreciate that statement about the price gouging. That would be nice if the city would put that up there.
Okay.
That way we know we are not doing this for city profit or any personal profit. Here's the link if you have a, a problem. And then I like how it was addressed that those that can't afford it, there is a workaround to try to help those people. And it sounds like we have addressed those that do not have internet access for their information. So I'm happy to hear that you've addressed those needs too. And then in closing, I just will have to say my opinion of how the letter came about. I'm not pleased with it. I felt it was rather punitive. It did seem to, well, it did gather the neighborhood together because I think we had over 300 posts on our, our Facebook. So we did have some unity of community, but I'd rather have it at, at one of the concerts instead. Thank you.
Well, and that's, you know, we, we did, they were at the concert, you know, Saturday night. And so we're going to be there again this, this, this Saturday night. We also, we've been to a couple of the farmer's markets, so we're trying to get you in places where you wouldn't normally.
I just, I didn't get the letter till this week and so, yes, they may have been there Saturday, but would not have visited them.
All right. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Lewis, 586 Mowmont Court. The WHPC, a member. Would like to play this tape.
Oh, did you see the presentation?
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought you wanted your paper.
No, no, no.
While they're figuring that out, I wanted to, you had mentioned about not competing with the private sector. I don't know why we can't contract with them at a set price for those. Maybe that's another option, but we can think through that process.
Sure.
Yeah, I would agree in that sense. I don't want it to take away from them, but, you know, just for the convenience of our citizens if I want to do it that way. but, you know, just for the convenience of our citizens if I want to do it that way. Give me one second for that.
With the city in condemning such actions. And I'm proud of our police department that we don't have such a policy in place and that our police department does have a relationship with our citizens here in the City of Apopka.
George Floyd was killed. That incident sparked a movement and a conversation, not just about the officer seen with a knee on his neck, but the other officers who seemingly stood by and did nothing.
This is a problem, and we're seeing this across the country.
Fernandez said when these two cases in Apopka landed on his desk, he deemed both excessive force and refused to sign off until a full investigation was done.
There is a thin blue line, and one of the hardest things that I had to do was step over that blue line and say, you can't tolerate this.
The one case, a woman says she was pushed to the ground inside her home. The other, a man was injured after his head hit a fence during a takedown. Fernandez says days later, he was put under investigation himself for leaking confidential information. He said that wasn't true and eventually unfounded, but he settled with the city feeling there was no choice but to leave. But he's speaking about what he says he saw then and what he sees now, not enough investigations into claims.
When you do that, then you start making the area gray of what officers do, and ultimately, it becomes a bigger problem.
These cases were not brought forward for review by any of the officers on the scene, instead by this captain after he took a look at the videos and raised a red flag, running it then up the chain. The captain was also put under a different investigation. He retired after two decades on the job. They say their experience last year is a perfect example of why officers don't speak up when something just doesn't.
Thank you.
Yes. My name is Leroy Bell. I live at 2308 Blue Meadows Court, Apopka, Florida. I'm the chairman of the AA Tripple C. AA Tripple C means Apopka Area Concerned Citizen Coalition. And there have been, citizens have some concerns about going, what's going on in Apopka. Apopka, congratulations on your new move for the thirty-nine. And you just came up and stated that Apopka is a good place to live, raise your family, come and to play. Sure, we have crime all over Apopka. We have gangs in Apopka, but we shouldn't have it at the police department. This police department have, in the last four years, have already, already, as you can see, six filed suits against the City of Apopka. And the concerned citizen that raised concern with us, what happened to these police officers? Where are they? Are they on administrative leave while we go through this process of the lawsuits? We know that one of them is an SRO. The one that you seen that take, took the chief nephew through the fence and dropped him on his face? He's a SRO at our high school. How would you like for him to get over to one of your kids? Another one you just elevated to Officer of the Month. He falsely arrested an African-American father at the Apopka Elementary. Would you like for him to get over to your kids? Where are these people? What are we going to do about it? Have, do any of you guys, I know you know, mayor, but any other commissioner, do you know anything about this? It's public record. All you got to do is go down to the county clerk house, clerk of the court, read the facts, and then you say this is a place to come raise your family. We had a, we had a discussion about annexation the other day, and you commissioner, Bankston, brung up the reason they did the parking lot up here, because people didn't feel safe coming to Apopka because it was so close to the south side of Apopka. With the drug, that, that's basically where it was built. Okay, well.
Okay, I want to interrupt.
I think correct, but do you think after people see this in the news, they want to come to Apopka where the police department is beating up citizens? That's a good look? Is it? And commissioner, I'll, I'll end with this. It's not a hit on you, it's just the way you felt, and there's nothing wrong with that. A police officer came forward, well, sent an anonymous letter to the city council, and didn't nobody know who it was. And I think he was called a coward because he wouldn't put his name on it. I think he was a hero. I truly do. What I think is a coward is a man to stand behind a badge and beat a helpless citizen. I served twelve years in the service. I know what it feel like to stand over a person with a gun and have power over him or her. I served this country. And to stand here and hear this mayor read and give people accolades, take pictures with them, promote them from one, matter of fact, one of the guys that was in this, over this tragedy is now an investigator. Somebody need to do something about this.
Let me just go ahead and answer. Actually, after you came and, and you gave some illustrations, I went in and I began to look into those, some of these, you know, we're not, we're not a lawyer, judge, and jury here, but we have the responsibility to investigate and look into those things. When something's done wrong, it should be dealt with in the right manner. We still have to deal with the legal process, so I don't, I, I can't speak directly to those, to you right now, but I believe those things will be playing out in the legal process. And, you know, again, they, they should be, and where wrong is exposed, it needs to be dealt with.
I agree one hundred percent, but my concern is this. You do have the power. You do have the power to make sure that every officer, you know, we'd, we'd had the Proud Boys already. We'd, we'd had one of the boys from, uh, uh, from up at January sixth that was from, uh, up here, up at the Capitol. One of those guys, one of those guys was our police officer, right here in Apopka. Mm-hmm. Listen, if you remember when I told you the last time I was here that the gentleman that was beat up, this guy was crying out. He'd been trying to get to the city council for a long time, but he decided to come, first of all, let me, let me say this if I can. I'm not anti-police. That's one of the best friends I got in the world sitting right over there. I'm talking about a man of great integrity. But when I came here the last time, this guy wanted to talk to the city council, couldn't talk to him, so he did a press release out there. To make him look bad, you're fire chief. I don't know who gave him the directive to do this. He sent out a directive telling the people to put on their ballistic helmet and their vests because it's going to be a riot. If you remember the Black Lives Matter march, the student from high school wanted to march across 441. This mayor wouldn't do it because they didn't want him or the police chief speaking at the Black Lives, uh, uh, Black Lives Matter march. But what he did was, he said, well, I tell you what, I make a deal with you. The only way this can happen, I'll give you the permit if you allow the Apopka, South Apopka mental storyline to be a part of it. A quick pro quo. There's so much going on in Apopka right now with Apopka Police Department. You got, you, you'll see it yourself. Just go to the clerk of the court. The only thing I ask is this. You do have the power to go down to the police department from A to Z, whoever involved, whoever was on that scene that night or that day, they need to be put on administrative leave until we work our way through all this. Because I tell you what. What if it's going to be your child, yours, yours, or yours? What if it's going to be one of your cousins, your nephew? What we going to say then?
Anybody else?
Good evening, council. My name is Donald Bynum. I live at 4308 Caledonia Avenue. And my question goes back towards the preventers, the backflow presenters. And while I was sitting here, I was talking with Paula about, there's some confusing information in here about either replacement or repair. If, say if your system fails, you say it has to be replaced. And what's stated here in the letter about the dual check, I believe it is called. It's called the dual check. And there's some confusion in there in the letter. I'm looking at it, reading it over, and I called one of the vendors on the letter, on the backside of the letter, and they told me that if you get the dual check unit, you know, in five years, it has to be, it's, it's not tested. But the thing is, I was told that it had to be replaced. So there, listen, let me just tell you what I, what I got today to be replaced. But Paula straightened me out and said that it's only parts that has to be replaced in five years, okay? So that needs to be explained because.
A little better, okay.
A little better communication on that, okay? Because I'm like, well, wait a minute, you know, whatever that cost is, because five years from now, prices are going to go up on everything, and each and every one of us know that, you know. So I just wanted to make that statement. If Paula wanted to add something to it.
Sure.
She can, because, you know, I got my question answered, but I'm just doing it for the.
No, we appreciate, no, we, you know, it's, we, the problem is when you're kind of immersed in it, you know what, what needs to be done, and yet, from the layman, sometimes you don't understand what we kind of take for granted. And so I, I, you know, I, I understand your.
And, and his, what had happened was that when he called the vendor, the vendor offhanded, oh, but it has to be replaced. Now, he knows it doesn't have to be taken out and replaced. I know this vendor. He knows that it's just the guts inside, the parts inside. But one of the reasons we did put that in, up, up to conversion, because if your device fails and there's the device, and there's two valves on either side, if all of that's got to be replaced, it's less if you just go to the conversion, if you just put the new device in. You, you know, we don't, we wanted to let them know that instead of having a repair bill for two fifty when you could get a brand-new device that doesn't need anything for ten, five years, that's why we tried to put a little bit of information on those other options as far as doing the conversion to a dual check as opposed to the double. Because with them being in the ground this long, a lot of them are failing, obviously. And it's not just the device that's failing, it's the shut-off valves on either side, and that's a bigger repair, so.
Thank you, Paula. Okay, appreciate it.
Fifty-fifty chance.
Good afternoon, everyone. Sylvester Hall, 3091 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. I got a beat down, I got a beat down from my wife the last, the last city council meeting we had. we had, because she, she watched, she watched the film, she watched the video, and she'd say, you're a retired veteran, 23 years, all types of pressure, why do you let somebody get you rattled? And Commissioner Banksen, I was rattled because when I started my journey here, I told you guys what I was looking for was leadership. The people need leadership, they need strong leadership, and Commissioner Banksen, where you say, everybody living in harmony, that's not true. And, listen to me, and we do lip service that everything is great, but with the residents that came, came before me, we see we have problems, and those problems need to be addressed, and leadership need to serve the people. Leadership need to serve the people, all people, and that's what needs to be done. What got me upset was when Mina Robinson came up and she said, hey, look, we're part of the community, I'm part of the community, I'm a business owner, and we was talking about the station project. She said, we don't care how it get done, just get it done, we don't care about the politics. But there was no politics, it was shot down on merits and principle. And then to hear you change your mind and say, hey, look, I wish I had a, went along with that, now that I know more, more information, the principles, the merit didn't change. And so when she said, we don't care about the politics, that's exactly what she was doing, playing politics. And I'm here to educate people, because I'm tired of seeing this, I am tired of seeing this. We have to come together as one and stop these shenanigans, and that's how I felt, and that's what bothered me. Now, to your credit, I know you told me to come and talk to you, and I will do that. Not once you told me, you told me twice, but I had my reserve because of that. And when we talk about leadership and how we treat people, if people don't know there's something better, and they, they're accustomed to getting what they're getting, they don't know any better. And so when I sit here and I watch, being a leader, being a manager, people are not going to give you their best effort unless they know you care about them, period. People are not going to give you your best effort unless they know you care about them. So I watch y'all read off 20-year service award, 25-year service award, and it's just a name written, and I'm like, okay, where are all people? Because I just tended a service award last month, and it went totally different, but it's, it's the difference of leadership, it's the difference of vision. Your city, your town is only going to go as far as your leader's vision for that city. And so when I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, wow, I wonder did those people really see this, the, the video to show they, they, they was recognized? But this is how it is at some of the other places. At 30 years, at 20 years, you get 150 bucks, not a whole lot, but it's just a little token appreciation. When you do 25 years of service, you get $200, and when you do 30 years of service, you get $250. That's showing people that, hey, look, you mean something other than me just giving you lip service. Also, they came to the, the chamber. I just, yeah, I just go ahead and do it. They get the chance to come to the city chamber, they get a chance to take a president, or take a picture with their mayor, their, their supervisor and things like that, so it's a grand, it's a grand event. And you get a chance to go outside, take pictures with your family and your loved ones that was able to, that was able to come there and support you for your years of service. We always tell people we honor their service, we honor, you know, what you do, you can tell them anything, but what you show them is what you really say how you feel about them, what you show them. And that's something that we need to, we need to do better at. I see my time is, is going way over here, and, um, I know as mayor you quick to say, yeah, but when somebody else came up here and spent seven minutes where nothing said, that person chastised the commissioner where nothing said, he cursed where nothing said, and so we see the difference in preferential treatment, and that has to stop. Now, what I got on here, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go ahead and do that because it's going to take too much of my time, but I will comment on the video. That video was in 2019, I had a chance to sit down and watch the video. What disturbed me as a military man, what disturbed me is leadership. If we don't see nothing wrong with that, we have serious problems and serious concerns here. And so now, what you didn't hear in the video is the communication between the public, who we are sworn to serve and protect. One of the neighbors was saying, hey, leave it alone, somebody turned around, one of the police officers turned around and said, shut the F up. And the neighbor say, you don't talk to me that way. And he said, another neighbor said, uh-uh, don't challenge him, they're the police, they can do whatever they want. That is a bad perception for our citizens to have about the police. I favor the police, like I say, police are under, under, underpaid and undervalued. But it's the bad ones when step out of line, give everybody else a bad name, and nobody stands up with any courage to call them out and say, and then when they do, they're cast out of the force, that needs to stop. Because I'm a respected time, and I don't want to get a whooping when I go home, but look for more from me on this matter, look for more from me on this, and that annexing discussion, that's all it was, a discussion. And all you did was put neighbors together that had deep emotions and scream against each other, that was it, and you took a nap in the meantime. So that told us what you really felt about South Apopka. So I'm not going to get into it because I don't have the time to, but look for more to come from me on this matter. It's time out, we need leadership, it's time out for businesses old, and it's time out for the good old boy system. The last debate, you said, I'm going to protect you. And I was thinking, who is he going to protect? And from who? So these things really bother me as a citizen, and I'm, I've been in Apopka for 23 years, I own not one, but two businesses that plan on bringing jobs to this community, but I want to make sure it's a community that you said, Mr. Banksen, it's a community that we all can thrive in, and that's what needs to be done, and that's the leadership we need moving forward.
Now, let me answer. I changed my mind, no, you can go ahead, I'm just going to answer. I changed my mind because we have had several issues come here that only had one vendor, and all of them have gone through. This was not to accept it, it was only to have the opportunity to examine it. After I sat back and listened to it, we lost an opportunity that would have brought jobs, possibly, would have brought education, would have done, would have done all of the things that all of us say we want. I've served for 26 years here, sir. Our church is right there, considered South Apopka. We've done, I feel like Paul, and you're a minister, Paul said, or from a minister family.
That's my heart.
Paul said, you know, you make me speak as a fool to defend myself, I don't like to do that. But we've done that consistently for 26 years, we have a monthly outreach and we feed people in South Apopka. We've consistently done, we've done free giveaways, we told all our people, you know what, why have a garage sale, bring it all here and let's give it to people that are in need. We've done feeding programs, we do leadership. I've served for 26 years in different ways, this to me is an opportunity to do that, I want to do that. We've, we've.
Well, let me say this, sir.
Let me just, let me just continue. I never said that everyone lives in harmony, that breaks my heart. As a minister, I'm constantly working to see people come together. My son had a knife pulled on him on last election, we could have pursued that and made a big deal. I didn't want to because I thought all it was going to do was bring greater divide in this city. What I want to do is bring that together. I've asked to have meetings and been shut out. I've sought after all of, anything's been brought before me, I've dealt with and I'll continue to do. The reason that I changed my mind was because when I looked at this, it hurt the citizens of South Apopka the most. As far as the parking lot, the whole point of that was so that it would begin to develop business and cause this area to be redeveloped, that is my heart, and that's, I think, all of our goal. And so thi- this isn't, I mean, there are, there's leadership going on, but that doesn't mean that all the problems are solved, there still needs to be. I agree with those things. I'd like to work together, that's why we've established a school that ministers of 250 kids, and two-thirds of them are minority. We could have done things that would have enriched ourselves much more, and we didn't do that for the desire to serve. So, again, as Paul said, I don't like to defend myself in that way, but I want you to understand, and everyone to understand, that we need to get past these divides, and whatever we need to do, I'm willing to have any conversation to do that with anyone. And we'll put the past aside, we got to get rid of the ghosts of the past and deal with our, our prospect for the future. We've got to stop listening to the shadowy voices and start listening to our heart. I think we're speaking the same thing, but we're, we're overcoming things that have been here for, for, for decades in our, in our differences, that's what we need to work for. I will do that, I'll continue to do that. And the reason, again, I stand by why I made that decision, there's not, I've been accused of being a good old boy, and it's like, by the good old boys, I, I, I'm totally against a good old boy system that would begin to cause people to, the backroom deals, I've never had that, there's not one person on this dais up here, not one of them have ever said something to me behind the scenes, given me so much as a glance, a little wink or a nod to steer me any different direction. When I come in here, I only know what I've studied, and there's not one person here that has ever done that with me, and I haven't with them, you know, and so, we do need to fix some things. Don't take my, my, my statements here as to think that we live in Shangri-La or heaven yet, but I do believe we have a wonderful community, I do stand with our police department. If there's something wrong, we need to deal with it, absolutely, just as in our city, if it is, we need to deal with that, there's a process, there are things that can be said and things that can't be said. And it's not to hide behind anything, I wish, there's things I wish I could say, but because the legal process is what it is, as we were instructed earlier, there are things that we're not allowed to do, or it could actually harm the citizens that we're supposed to represent. So, that's my heart, you know, that doesn't mean we do everything right, but we do it the best that we know.
Thank you. All right. Who, who's next, Susan?
No, I, 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 I want to answer, I wanted to answer to that.
We, we can meet, I, I, we're, we're.
I want to answer, I want, I want to answer to that.
Okay, who, Susan? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have the consent agenda, we have six, six items on the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the items? If not, like to ask for motion to approve all six items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Good evening, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Major development plan has been submitted for a 300-unit residential subdivision consisting of 124 single-family detached units and 176 town home units developed in two phases. Located east of South Benyon Road and south of Willyett Avenue, the properties are approximately 95.09 acres, entered zone PD via PD master plan that was approved by the city council in December 15th, 2021. The major development plan is consistent with all elements of the approved PD master plan, including lot sizes, unit sizes, access, and open space. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, the planning commission unanimously recommends approval, and the recommended motion this evening is to approve the Magnolia Terrace major development plan. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby? Applicant, want to come forward? You good?
Just to confirm, the construction entrance will be off of Plymouth Rento only for this one, based off our last public hearing? Yeah, okay.
Yes. Okay. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the major, or the Magnolia Terrace major development plan.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Apopka 429 Development Agreement, Ms. Pam.
This is a development agreement for Apopka 429 as required by our code for all PD projects. It pretty much details what are, what they're required to do, and I'd say the high points of the agreement are the transportation impact fee credits and the water sewer and reuse impact fee credits. I can answer any questions, the applicant and his team is here, and, oh, I guess I should show you where this is on the map, this is the project that's just west of the airport, they're going to do about 2.5 million square feet of industrial use, it's a pretty sizable project, and the quest is to approve the development agreement.
Any questions for Pam?
She had already.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the Apopka 429 Development Agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Brian.
All right, so this is for BR Arena, approached the city for lease of property for soccer fields, beach volleyball, elite training. So what we're looking at is they requested space of the city, they contacted Community Development, it's Parks and Rec related, so Community Development contacted me, and I went through some areas for them to see, they were happy with the East Gro, East Gross, the old Little League facility. And, and so, we were able to set up a plan, so, again, no commitment today from city council as far as, there's nothing financial, nothing legal, this is just about negotiating. This is what they want, primarily a soccer, an elite training facility for, primarily soccer, but they also have beach volleyball there. Any usage with the site, so they have some other sites in their letter of interest, that would still require city approval based on zoning and legal and all that. It's eight acres out of the 12 or so at the site, $37,000 a year for 10 years with a 10-year renewal option, and we're requesting formal negotiating approval, and this is, this is not their layout, but this kind of gives an idea of what it could look like. This is a city layout that we put in, so it accommodates space for water plant expansion, they're looking at putting in around 4.5 million dollars into the site, that's their money that they're putting in, that's not city money, and then, like I said, we just, we get, we get paid rent on the site. So we're just looking to have approval of city council to, for us to go forward with negotiating the lease.
Any questions for, for Brian?
Yeah, I'm real excited about this, obviously we need the soccer space, are these full-size soccer fields, they, I don't know that you.
Not, they're turf fields, not necessarily, they're for, they're training.
So training, so they're small, that's what I thought. And the small orange.
Those are, that represents beach volleyball.
And is that like a, a two-man type of team, or it's not a full?
It could be however they want, yeah.
So again, this is just our.
Yeah, that's just our thing, but they would set it, it's their program, so they're, they're leasing the space, they can do what they want with it, within zoning and within the, within whatever we approve in the lease.
And will there be walls put around to separate the water system, is that something?
Glenn, would that be?
Uh, yeah, fence around.
Fence, fence around.
Okay, fence, okay.
What's on the, the, this side, where you have the blue?
That's water plant expansion.
That's what?
That's to expand the water plant.
Oh, okay. Will there be any facilities there, like bathrooms, I mean, you're going to have all this?
Oh, yeah, they'll, yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll add bathrooms to their site, they'll add bathrooms, looking concession.
There is, there is a, there's a couple of buildings.
There's, yeah, this building here, there's a building existing that was the Little League concession, restrooms, offices, so that's there for them to use if they want to refurbish, or if they want to build new, they can build new.
Commissioner Smith?
So this is just to negotiate? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So this is just to negotiate?
Correct, correct.
You're not deciding yes or no, just to negotiate?
We, we want you to decide yes or no, and that, that you're okay with us leasing the property, we're, we're working through the details on the agreement, but just.
Right, so, right, so this. Right, so, right, so this is approval to negotiate leasing, leasing this space on this property.
Right.
Okay.
Just trying to, you know, just get a kind of a head nod that we're, Commissioner Smith?
I, I think it's going to be an excellent opportunity for our young people here in our city, and so I think it's a great program.
Mr. Becker?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Well, I want to thank Brian and Vlad for, you know, Vlad was one kind of, kind of design here. I don't, well, that will end up being eventually, but, you know, it's a revenue source for us and additional fields for our kids as well as kids from all over the area that can come play. And the only unfortunate part about this whole, the whole project there, I don't know if you know this, Brian, but that's where I played pony baseball. That was my pony baseball field now is gone, so you just remember that. I used to play baseball there. But anyway.
Hit a plaque.
Yes.
How many years ago? I don't remember.
Ah, you don't want to ask that. But anyway, so, no, well, I appreciate, no, Brian and Vlad have done a lot of work, you know, trying to negotiate. I know we've got kind of a semi-agreement we're working through. Michael's kind of putting the finishing touches on the agreement. And a great group out of Brazil, and they're trying to kind of make this a nationwide, you know, we'll be one of many sites. And so it could be a, long-term could be some decent economic activity for people coming in, you know, from out of town and staying with us and playing there on some of these fields. So we're excited about, I think, the opportunity there.
Can I, how did they find us?
They reached out to, they reached out to Community Development. They were just looking for space in the city. They're looking at space all over central Florida, from here, Hayne City, out towards Tampa. They've been all over. I think they're looking to expand into Texas too. They're just moving in from Brazil. They're trying to move into the United States. So they were looking at central Florida area and just looking for land that they could use.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Super. Well, thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. I guess I need a motion to authorize the staff to negotiate an agreement with?
Is there any further discussion?
What's that? Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Yeah, come on up. Rogers?
Okay. Rogers is back at 7 West Main Street. I think it is a great opportunity, but I think we are neglecting the fact that different football programs use this field during the football season for practicing, things of that nature. So at least consideration on maybe leaving the area for what they do. I don't know if they lease it or use it free. But the more and more I see this is, is great for the city, but it's, it's a revenue source for you guys, but it also puts a burden on someone else.
It does what?
Put a burden on someone else. Because the majority of these sports already cost a lot of money, and they always try and look for places to use a field and all those particulars. So hopefully you can kind of take into account whether, you know, the pad was for, maybe it can be still a pocket park, a pocket park that would maybe still meet the needs of the average citizen that just want to go out and throw a ball. Because at this point, if you live in, I guess, the center of Apopka, you got to go way to Northwest Rec or over to Edwards Field, I guess you, there's really no place for somebody that can get out and run. So I think we need at least take into account some of the things that features for communities that don't have private parks and open spaces of that nature. I know you've mentioned several times about open passive space, but we need to take account what people are using it for now. And because everybody got to always pay for something, and you're still paying taxes. So at least take into account for people that's there from usually June is when they start up their football season to November. But I know every afternoon, 5 or 6 o'clock, you have teams out there practicing on the south side where Dream Lake is, as well as the north side. So hopefully you can kind of bring that into the fold. Thank you.
We do have that park on, on lake though, you know, that, that pocket park.
It's not big enough to throw a football.
No, no, right, I agree. Yes, okay. Next to, next to high school?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just going by what I see when I'm driving. So I don't know if they know this or not, or if you charge them to use those fields, I'm not sure. But I'm just saying what I see just, I saw a guy out there with his kids throwing the ball around, pulling tires. I'm just saying, just for the average person, they don't want to have to pay just to play. That's all I'm getting at. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else want to speak on this matter? All right. Well, I look for a motion to authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with BR Arena to lease a portion of 10 East Grostenbacher Drive with final lease to be approved by City Council at a date to be determined.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2895. Any changes? Okay, all right.
Ordinance number 2895. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from commercial to mixed use for certain real property located north of East Semeron Boulevard and west of Sheeler Avenue, comprising 5.67 acres more or less, and owned by 3R Corp., providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Yeah, I do have questions.
Okay, sure.
This is the apartment?
Correct.
Over off of Monroe.
Pam, you want to, you want Pam? There'd be a Pam question, probably.
I guess when we were talking last time, I know the applicants were going to speak with more of the community. Has any more of that happened?
That's what I remember.
Have we heard any, anything more? I don't, I don't know that you would know that.
I can only talk about speaking with the properties next door.
Okay. Because, again, I get more responses towards the negatives.
Good evening. Kim Fisher, for the record, 1614 White Dove Drive, Winter Springs, Florida, 32708. I am the engineer here with the owner of the property. I believe you might be confusing that with the other apartment complex that I'm working on. That one, we are having a secondary neighborhood community meeting. But this one was two weeks ago, and we had traffic concerns.
This was on Monroe next to the, next to the grocery store?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But I don't recall that we were supposed to have any other neighborhood meetings with that.
Okay, that was what I thought was being discussed.
I'm getting old too, so maybe I just don't remember, but.
I know we had one of the gentlemen in the neighborhood speak, and he seemed pleased with that, so, okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, Commissioner Smith?
I just want to know that we get any clarification whether or not we're going to be able to access through the parking lot of the shopping center.
We don't know for certain right now, but I have been talking with the applicant and proposing to them what I think are going to be their access options. At this stage, we don't really have to determine that, but it's, I think that the applicant agrees that that shopping center needs some revitalization. Until they really do their traffic study, we can't say what's going to work, but, yeah, it's a good idea. It just hasn't, at this stage, we don't decide that.
And we're going to get another bite at the apple?
Oh, yeah.
Or two.
Yeah, it's, this is, I mean, we've had conversations with Kim and Shane, the owner. And I have tried, I've reached out to the folks next door. They, they don't really want to do apartments, but they'd like to do development. And I think they're going to come in and talk to us because they need this project to do cross-access. And that cross-access is going to go to Monroe and the shopping center. I think that we'll be able to find good access for everyone. It's just, I can't tell you what that is right now until they do their traffic study.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody good? Okay. All right. We'll look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2895.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nope.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Banksen in the?
No.
Banksen. Opposition. Okay, ordinance number 2896.
Ordinance number 2896. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city industrial for certain real property located north of East Keene Road and west of Clerken Road, comprising 12.74 acres more or less, and owned by AED Dewar Nursery 2019 Trust, providing for severability and for an effective date.
No changes. Okay. Any questions? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2896.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
I didn't say, Mr. Becker?
I'm sorry. Smith, I'm sorry. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Susan, did you get that?
I got it.
Uh, ordinance number 2897.
Ordinance number 2897. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to IL Light Industrial District for certain real property located north of East Keene Road and west of Clerken Road, comprising 12.74 acres more or less, and owned by AED Dewar Nursery 2019 Trust, providing for severability and for an effective date.
No changes? Okay. Any questions? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2897.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2898.
Ordinance number 2898. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to Kelly Park Interchange District Mixed Use KPI-MU and assigning a neighborhood overlay district for certain real property generally located east of State Road 429, west of Plymouth Sorento Road, south of Kelly Park Road, and north of Joey McCutcheon Road, owned by Diane Reed Goolsby, Deborah Reed Willbarger, Diane Donahoe, and Dwana McClure, comprising 41.2 acres, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2898.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2899.
Ordinance number 2899. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described lands situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by G&amp;B Sorento LLC, located north of West Kelly Road Park, well, West Kelly Park Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
No changes. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2899. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, City Council reports. Mr. Banksen, you've got a, is it PowerPoint or?
Well, no, I don't have PowerPoint. Everybody got the information, I believe. Did everybody have a chance to look over that? The email?
Yes, I did.
Kyle, did you get a chance?
Yeah, I, I got it.
Okay, so, yeah, basically what I wanted to do was just bring back, just to our attention, just something that's, that's been important for me all along, and just looking, digging into the reserve policy guidelines from the, the GFOA. And going back, I, I wish I had gone back and reprinted for everybody the proposal I put back in 2017. At the time, if you remember, I spoke with, actually it was Robert E. Lee, not the one we would all think of right off the bat. Dr. Robert E. Lee, Bob, was Assistant Professor, Graduate School of Political Science, Florida Gulf Coast University. Bottom line was, when I was first starting to serve, we had the opportunity through Florida League of Cities for different training for us as leaders, and I know different ones of us have gone through that. And we were dealing with issues then, and so I proposed some questions to him. And he basically reaffirmed these different things that I thought that I understood in reading this. So I wanted us just to, not necessarily, we don't have to go in depth here, other than to look at, here's the reasoning behind that, why I believe we need to set a policy. It's actually recommended that we have a policy, and then there's recommendations in how to approach that. And that's up to interpretation for every single city. So I'm going to try and keep this brief because it's been a longer night for everybody. But the fund balance guidelines for the general fund, this is what was emailed to you. Just wanted to touch on a couple of things. On page two of six, the GFOA recommends that governments establish a formal policy on the level of unrestricted fund balance that should be maintained in the general fund for gap and budgetary purposes. Going on down, appropriate level, and this is where I think there's confusion. Again, there's difference of opinion on this from different financial people. So this is where we all just take this in and look at all of these pieces and say, what fits for us? And that's the bottom line. Appropriate level, the adequacy of unrestricted fund balances in the general fund should take into account each government's own unique circumstances, and that's the real key. Again, for example, governments that may be vulnerable to natural disasters, which we are, more dependent on a volatile revenue source, and that we're trying to get to something stable. I think we've all been working on that, what is the level of service? And we don't have that answer, so it's still a little bit in flux. But I don't think that one's a big issue necessarily for us. But also, potentially subject to cuts in state aid and/or federal grants, may need to maintain a higher level in the unrestricted fund balance. Going on to the next page, on page three, in that first paragraph, if you start the word nevertheless, GFOA recommends at a minimum, underline that word minimum, that to me is the starting point. We're building a house. That to me is the foundation. Every house has to have that. And we can't build a slab and say we've got a house. It's something to build on. But again, as a minimum, that the general purpose government, regardless of size, maintain unrestricted budgetary fund balance in the general fund of no less than two months of regular, regular general fund operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures. Anybody who's listened to Dave Ramsey, we know that's like, his is three to six months, this and that. We know that's the standard for the minimum when we go to figure out what is that number for us? Where does that need to be? So I think we would all agree on that. My concern is that their recommendations beyond that, we haven't really parsed into that to really see why I'm pulling for a little bit higher. So let me just jump down number six there, just a couple of sentences later. It says, furthermore, a government's particular situation often may require a level of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund significantly in excess of this recommended minimum level. So again, it's subjective right now, but it shows that there are situations where it should possibly be significantly higher. Is that what we need? That's the question, you know, I'd like for us as a, as a group to be able to work through and, and get the corporate mindset on that. In any case, such measures should be applied within the context of long-term forecasting, therefore, thereby avoiding the risk of placing too much emphasis upon the level of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund at any one time. So the flexibility factor. If you remember when I made the presentation back in 2017, I had researched it. I found some different ones, actually a city out of California, that they had done this same process. And then looking at the cities around us, I've got some of those facts and figures. Again, I'm trying to move through this fast enough. I'll tell you what, I can get those to you if you want through Ed. But basically, the cities around us, where are they at? And you handed me that, and it's disappeared here. Is this it? Here it is. So, I mean, I'm looking through these, like Winter Park, so 29.52, Claremont, 25.1, Okoye, 46% unassigned fund balance. They're, they're just kind of all over the board. One was even as high as 60%. They address what to do if it's too high. I do believe that there's a point where it's too high and where we're hamstringing ourselves for monies that we can use for things that we should use them on. But when I, when I made the recommendation, I tried to be conservative in that and really give us room. So what I had looked at, the cities that we were kind of comparing ourselves to at the time, things that we wanted to be, aspire to be, they were all in the 30 to 35% range. I suggested 25%, so as not to try and just push it to the ultimate limit. I also recommended that we give ourselves a five- I also recommended that we give ourselves a five-year window to renew those funds. So again, it wasn't that we can never use them. When we have a need, an infrastructure need, a community need, that's important enough, that we do go ahead and utilize those. But I just want that policy of what are we going to do to make sure they get put back? Because I don't want to be underinsured, if that's, you know, a way to look at it. You know, the more assets you have, you need insurance. Man, it's tempting to take those premiums and pay them on, you know, got to get new shoes for the kids, or whatever that is, you know, the practical things of life. But we put ourselves in a dangerous place. So let me just quickly go through the rest of this. And then the second thing that you have there, which I think we can look at then and go from there, is a reserve policy. Why is it important? The size of government reserves, acceptable uses of reserves. And it's basically a template that if maybe in the future we can do a workshop situation where we do take these, boil it down a little bit more, and come up with something that I believe is safe moving forward to safeguard us as a city, that we have a policy which is recommended by the GFOA and others. So, again, picking up where we were on page three of six of the first document. Such measures should be applied within the... I'm sorry, I read that. Next sentence. In establishing a policy governing the level of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund, a government should consider a variety of factors, including... And they listed several here. First one, the predictability of its revenues and the volatility of its expenditures. So again, that's something that we have to look at and be subjective about. How does that affect us? Do we have certain volatility within our budget that we need to look out for? I know we did this last, with our last budget, because we knew we need to advance in police and fire. And so we wanted to make sure and not just spend that all so that we would have it to try and make steps forward. We... Well, let me keep going here, and I'll get to my next one. It's perceived, this is number two, perceived exposure to significant one-time outlays, such as disasters, immediate capital needs, and state budget cuts. We actually faced the disasters after this was presented. We had two hurricanes back-to-back. We hadn't had any in 11 years. And so again, it can lull us into, well, you know, maybe they're not coming here anymore. Actually, the statistic, it put us more likely to have one, and we did. And I asked again for information on that, that it took us four years, I believe, to recoup the monies that FEMA promised. And that's what I had mentioned at the time. I had found different ones said they had taken up to five years to get those monies back. So we want to have the buffer in case we're in that situation and we have that one-time incident, that we can deal with whatever we need to until those monies come back and then they replenish it. Again, all of those decisions are, we have the reserves, how much do we want to dig into them? You know, we can as long as we put them back. Number three, a potential drain upon general fund resources from other funds, as well as availability of resources in other funds. That's typical to what we deal with. Number four, the potential impact on the entity's bond ratings. Oh, and let me go back, number two, state budget cuts. If you remember, they almost put us in a situation with the doubling the homestead exemption that would have cut in, was it a million and a half dollars, I think, at the time, that we didn't have? If that would have happened, it really would have put us behind the eight ball. So again, those type of things that can happen, we don't know if they will. We can't oversave, but we can undersave. And so what does everyone feel is that wise level to go at? Again, number four, the potential impact on the entity's bond ratings and the corresponding increased cost of borrowed funds. Again, I talked with Dr. Lee on that, and he said there are certain things that we should not be putting on time. Anything really under, such as air conditioners, cars, you know, vehicles, things like that. We should be funding those within our budget. If we're at a place where we're beginning to borrow to cover those things, even though they're historically low rates, he said, that is not good policy, that's not good practice. And so we were facing some of those things back then. And again, maybe like you, I had to learn those things. And that's how I began to learn and understand that. However, I've done budgets for several years, and this has just got a lot more zeros behind it. Finally, number five, commitments and assignments. We have unassigned and unrestricted fund balances. This gives us operational buffer. So again, not to dig too deeply. Next page, use and replenishment. The fund balance policy should define conditions warranting its use. And if a fund balance falls below the government's policy level, a solid plan to replenish it. Basically, that they talk about somewhere here, describe the time period over which the fund... No, that's not it. I'm sorry, I didn't highlight that one. But they pointed more towards a one-year time limit to try and restore those. I'd suggested up to a five-year, which can help it last past a single administration so it doesn't hamstring someone. At the same time, it's something that we have put a policy that says we will aim to bring that back to those levels that keep us safe and keep us covered. So that's the nuts and bolts, the heart of it there. Again, y'all have had time to look at that. I would like to propose that sometime in the future we go ahead and have a time that we set, whether it be a workshop, whether it be something that we want to do here, if that's enough time, that we can really dig into this more, let you all have a chance to look at that and maybe come up with your own, what you feel would work for us. And then from there, establish a reserve policy. For me, again, as I announced tonight, my heart's here very much. And it was a challenging decision because I love serving here. I made that decision because I felt like it could better serve here and work together with these things. This is something I'd like to leave behind if that happens. And I think it's something that's worth looking at. I think we can do what works for us as Apopka. We can look at what others do, but we can tailor this to what works for us and doesn't hold too much, but doesn't leave us undercover. And that's...
Well, maybe you can get, Edward can kind of reach out and find out some, if there are policies out there that, you know, might kind of fit what Commissioner Banksen's talking about. I'd be happy to take that on.
And one thing I did propose back in 2017 was taking that 25%, but reserving a portion of it, and I think it talks about that in this document, to reserve a portion of it for things such as storms. And then others for things, whether, you know, again, if we didn't have that, we wouldn't have got Camp Weewaw. Now, of course, I voted against that to reiterate, if everyone wants to throw darts. Not because I don't believe in it, I believe in it greatly, but my concern was just in other measures, you know? The bottom line is, we were able to do that because it was there for us to dip into, because it was seen as the whole, as a good move. And again, afterward, had you been able to share with us all the things you knew, I might have changed my mind. But the bottom line is, you know, something that will put us in a position, and that's my three main points, is things that we can't control, one-time events, our own volatility of our budget, and the opportunity, when they come along, that we would have enough reserve that we could move on that on behalf of the people. And so...
And we do have, one of the things we put into place, not my first year, probably my second year, we put in that $250,000 grant match. So for those grants that come up that we don't, we haven't anticipated, there is 250,000 that we replenish every year. Obviously, this year we've done really well. Now, we'll have to spend a lot more to get all of it. But it's, that's one of the things that we have added. It's not a tree falling in your lap, but it's still, it's something, it's an unexpected expense, but in a good way. But, so I think we can, you know, we'll be able to reach out. Anybody have any questions for Commissioner Banksen on this?
Yeah. Yeah, and we've had this conversation before. I don't... On its surface, it's not something I would have a whole bunch of friction towards. It's just, you know, like, the last time that we had our caffir presented to us, I asked our auditor at the time, you know, what do you think is a healthy percentage? And he said 20% or higher, which is fine. But, and I think you were going towards this at the end of your comments, if you want to build up to 25% to ensure those storm events or forces of nature kind of events where you have... Because I'm just jotting down like three things, like movement of people considerations. So some cities have bridges, right, that they're responsible for. Whereas we don't really have that from our perspective. Maybe, and I don't think John's Road is our road, right? Where the new subdivision is, over by Marshall Lake. But, but point being, is it something where to happen to that bridge, right? You have emergency access through Breckenridge. So you kind of look at it from a movement of people perspective, roadways, things like that. Emergency services, obviously. Police, fire personnel to be able to service our population. So if trucks are demolished, or, you know, stations are depleted, you know, you have some sort of contingency there. And then last being just general health. So in a storm event like that, if you have flooding, you can have health issues. So making sure that water is safe, things like that. If you want to earmark that to be that buffer above 20% or above the minimum all day long, let's just have on paper what that looks like, model that out to say, this is what we think in a storm event or things like that that are most applicable here. Because you mentioned California, obviously earthquakes.
Yeah.
You know, would impact buildings and roadways similar to what a hurricane would be here.
Yeah. And part of what moved me to establish it there was actually coming down from the 30 and 35, which most similar cities to ours, that were on a similar trajectory that we were. That's where they had come at, you know? Again, we look at them, I came down from that because we don't have some things that maybe another city has. And I recall that, maybe you asking that question and him saying the 20%. Like I said, different ones are going to give different standards. And when I talked to the professor there, who does, they actually teach cities, and his accolades are just amazing as far as his background for that. So it helped to weigh that a little bit for me. But again, that's why I think if we have that conversation, really look and drill down on that. You know, if Apopka needs to be at another place, I think we'll see that. But I just think that was a good, maybe starting point for the conversation. We may look at this and dig down and say, you know, maybe we do need to be a little more where Clermont is, or Winter Garden, or whatever, a little bit higher. But again, it's apples and oranges sometimes. There are cities, but every city is unique. So what works for us, that's basically my goal on this. And just to have us just good for the future.
All right, Mr. Velazquez.
Okay, so everyone has gotten an opportunity to speak. So yesterday, we attended the discussion over at the Community Center regarding the potential of an annexation for South Apopka. And at the end, I was not able to share my opinion or my thoughts. So today, I took the opportunity to kind of write something down. So as we have given everyone else a kind of a platform to speak, I'm asking you to give me some time also. So I'd like to make a brief statement about the meeting on Tuesday, February 15, that took place at the Apopka Community Center, where the public was invited to discuss the potential annexation of South Apopka. The full city council was present. And at the conclusion of the meeting, three commissioners spoke, but I was not given the opportunity to voice my opinion or give an input into the subject matter. During the hours following the meeting, that meeting, I received calls from constituents expressing their dissatisfaction and concerns, wanting to know why I was not given the opportunity to speak. So I would like to share my thoughts following that discussion that took place during the hour and a half public noticed community meeting. During the discussion, several residents were passionate in expressing their frustration, their disappointment, and the pain they feel from decades of hearing promises for change and improvements to their community. These residents feel their voices have not been heard or represented by the past or present administrations. With local elections once again in the forefront, the candidate forums brought to light the need to finally address this issue and begin a discussion on how to address the feasibility of annexation. The Apopka Chamber of Commerce initiated the first public meeting on a short notice at the request of specific community residents from South Apopka. These members requested information about the position of each of the candidates regarding the annexation of the unincorporated South Side of Apopka. The discussion was led by several members of the South Apopka's community and pastors that each passionately shared their stance, their concerns, and suggestions as how to move forward. With the election coming into its last few weeks, I hope this conversation will continue and that the next elected administration will commit and organize a community advisory committee with residents from the unincorporated South Side of Apopka and the residents from the City of Apopka to address the annexation. This will be the conclusion. Again, I would like to thank the residents that reached out and reminded me that as their representative, when I was silenced and not given the opportunity to speak, they too were also silenced, and this should not be acceptable. So thank you, and thank you for allowing me to share my opinion and my statement from yesterday.
The only thing I want to say, I mean, you weren't silenced, I just... The letter of the law, it was 11 o'clock, and we probably should have cut off the speaker earlier since you'd had time. I agree, it wasn't my meeting. And I would agree that you should have had the opportunity to speak, but we went, literally went past 11 o'clock, which was not legal. With our legal notice, we passed our time that we could be together as a commission. So I apologize, I mean, I don't have anything to apologize for, it wasn't my meeting, but I understand your frustration, so...
It wasn't that I was frustrated. It was once I got home, I did start to get a text, and then I got some calls and they said, we never heard from you. So as a representative, the constituents had a right to hear from me.
Sure.
And so all I could say was, the meeting was over. But throughout the day, I was getting phone calls. And again, they kept saying, we didn't hear from you, what's your stance? I am a candidate, I'm a commissioner, but I'm also a candidate running in the next election. And the representatives, part of that discussion was to hear from all of us. That was the purpose of the meeting that the President of the Chamber had was because they were asking her for our positions. And so she organized this so that we can express our positions. And three of the commissioners were able to do that. And actually, the one that's actually running for election was not able to do it. So today, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my opinion, or, you know, share my thoughts of what I felt the meeting was about and what I took away from the meeting. So today, I get the opportunity, for those who are listening via the YouTube, and for those that are still remaining here, this is my opinion of what I took away from that meeting yesterday. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Oh, you've got more, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, just to follow up, you know, if I would have known that, I would have gladly given that time. I apologize, I would have preferred to allow you for those very reasons. And my understanding is that because it's a noticed meeting, we will get in trouble if it goes beyond that, not to try and shut you out. I wish I did not talk this long. Maybe you would have gotten in there. So I'm glad you're able to express that as well.
That's it.
And, but I was pleased about that, and I'm excited that we're moving forward. Conversations, whether they're comfortable or not, we need to have them and get through these things, and that's a good thing, so...
All right, Mr. Smith?
And I was just going to say, Commissioner Velazquez, I noticed that you were not going to have an opportunity to speak. And I was getting the attention of the moderator, and that's what I was told, that it was 11 o'clock and we had to shut down. So it wasn't anything personal at you, it was just time expired. And so we're glad to hear your position and your comments here tonight. And lastly, I'm just going to say that I did spend a couple days in Tallahassee last week, was able to speak to some of our senators and our representatives, and was well-received by all of them that I spoke with. And some things that we addressed was rental assistance and workforce housing that's become a very necessity throughout the state of Florida, and especially here in our very own city. And we talked about sovereign immunity, that there's a bill that could hurt our cities if it's passed. And so we did present them what they compromise, and we just have to wait and see which way they decide to go with it. But we also congratulated... But we also congratulate them on the things that they were doing to support the local cities and for the bill that they're passing in reference to cybersecurity, which is going to be of help to our citizens as well. And so overall, was well-received and was glad to have the opportunity to go.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Becker?
I didn't plan to say anything during this one, but so, I guess this is a legal question. So it is time-bound in terms of if you put an end time, it's not when the meeting is adjourned, it's time-bound by the end time of the notification?
I understand, I need to double-check that. The meeting is noticed, it's a meeting time, there'll be a public meeting. Usually, there isn't an end time at a, say, a public meeting like this meeting tonight. It goes until it's adjourned. But that I will double-check. However, because it was not, the meeting was not a city meeting. That was a private meeting, which they invited commission members. And in order to comply with sunshine law, you have to notice it to the public that two or more commissioners may be, will be present, and therefore, because they're present in order to comply with sunshine, they may speak. We've had public meetings, we've had public meetings before, we've given a time, and it has been bound, there hasn't been something bound. Because it was not our meeting or a public meeting, there was no role for me to give legal counsel in a meeting that was actually moderated, deleted by the Chamber of Commerce.
Gotcha, okay. So just for future reference, because if we have community meetings like that going forward, we should just list a begin time, because then there's no time-bound nature to it. But my hang-up is talking about it wasn't a city meeting, because the public notice that went in the Sentinel says, notices hereby given that the city of Apopka and the committee of One Apopka Outreach will host a committee meeting on Tuesday, February 15th. So that screams that we hosted that. So who from the city of Apopka is the host of that meeting? Because, I mean, nobody was asked to host that.
I don't have an answer for that.
Well, I'll give you the answer. You know, when Kate put the meeting together, she said, you know, I'd like to do this meeting, and she said, what about, you know, inviting the commissioners? I said, well, if they want to invite them, I want them to be able to speak. So, I mean, I'll take full credit that, you know, I noticed it so that you could come to the meeting and speak. Otherwise, we'd have just all sat there and said nothing. So I, without counsel, I'm, Michael, I just, I took one of our public notices from Susan and just put some times and dates on it and sent it to the Sentinel. We were, you know, bound by, you know, I had enough time to get it in the paper. So it was not a, you know, just to give, I could have just not noticed it, and we'd all sat there and said nothing, or I gave you the opportunity to speak. So I, you know, I apologize if that was a problem, but I thought, giving you all an opportunity, we should have had more of an opportunity to speak, but it worked, it worked out the way it did. So I, you know.
No, I mean, it's all good. I mean, it's just the notice said it's hosted by the city of Apopka. So to say that it wasn't a city of Apopka meeting is, to me, that doesn't reconcile, but, okay.
Okay, who we got?
At least we're stumbling in the right direction.
Stumbling in the right direction, there you go. All right, Edward?
I do not have anything, Mayor.
Michael?
No report.
All right, Brian, I didn't know you were going to be here this late. Why don't you come up, you just help me with this, the tracking group. I don't have any slides or anything, I just wanted to kind of brief you on a, we've had a group come in, they're out of Canada, about 13 facilities across the country, countries.
Yeah, Europe and Canada and Daytona Beach and.
Yeah, so anyway, what they want to do is they want to get our ropes course up and running in a much more sophisticated, cool way, and want to partner with the city at Camp Weewaw. We've got the climbing wall, we've got the, they want to add a lot of ropes, and so what we're trying to do is figure out a way to partner with them at Camp Weewaw. We've met, I know, Brian, how many times you met with them? Three times?
Several, several times, yes.
So I don't, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but anything else, I mean, just kind of a?
Yeah, I mean, they're looking to put a lot of money into Camp Weewaw and do a lot of capital to create a fun zipline and tree trail, tree kind of net course. Yeah, I didn't bring any slides. And also upgrade our climbing wall and maybe do some stuff with our boats and stuff as far as operating goes. But yeah, it's, I mean, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of equipment into Camp Weewaw, and then they would operate that as really a, to create, make Camp Weewaw a destination for people to want to do zip lines, you know, outside of summer camp. And in my mind, it'd be something where it's going to increase our camp registration, it's going to increase our rental opportunities as a benefit to us, it's going to put Camp Weewaw really as a prime location, retreats and company retreats, kids coming out there. So it's a great opportunity, and, you know, they're looking for a long-term investment that includes capital and operating.
So I don't know if anybody has any questions. We'll obviously have to have a, probably back next commission meeting to bring up the proposal and show you. Hopefully, they'll get him down there, he's in?
He's, Olivier lives close, he lives close. They have a, they have a zipline, they have a course in Daytona Beach, and one of their parks in Daytona Beach, I've been to it. But Olivier lives close, he's probably within 20 minutes of here, so.
So we definitely want to have him, meet with each one of you independently to kind of go over the program, and then we're working, trying to work through a contract that, so giving them opportunities to rent and then us to get equipment that we wouldn't otherwise probably get. So thank you, Brian, I appreciate you hanging around for that. Let's see, that was number, okay, real quick, the Palmer Rissler property, I don't know if you, that's the property that was in foreclosure, is now going to auction on, what is the date here? What's that? March 22nd. So it's the 202 acres, it will go to auction, and they've got an interesting, it's a, what do they call the, there's a particular name for the auction where you have somebody, what's it called, a stalking horse bidder. So there will be a bidder that puts a bid out that will be the minimum bid, I don't know how it works, but anyway. So we've had quite a lot of interest. I know they've talked to Jim, they've talked to myself and Edward, so I think we will have four or five bidders, and we're talking in the $40 million range is what that 200 acres will go for. So a lot of interest out there, you know, because it's inside the Kelly Park interchange. So interesting things to come. I think within 30 days, you have to pay for the complete, all $40 million has to be paid within 30 days. So interesting coming up. Let's see, talked about the South Apopka annexation discussion, local bill, our local bill, House Bill 1431 has made it through all three committees now, is ready for the House floor, and then when it gets off the House floor, it goes to the Senate. They take up all their local bills like on one day. And remember, that's to drop from the 80, from 150 down to 80 people, giving more opportunities for smaller restaurants to come into our CRA, benefiting, you know, all those small businesses that we hope will come to Apopka. Let's see, City of Apopka, I know that Susan's going to be next commission meeting, we're going to be going over the Edgewood Greenwood Cemetery, the replat or new plating of all the land, you know, we're down to like less than 25 plots left in our entire cemetery. So she'll come to us the next council meeting to go over the plats and how that will all lay out for you. City lobbies will open back up on Monday, the 21st. You've got the COVID numbers, they're coming down, come down a lot, so I think we feel pretty comfortable we'll be able to open up next week. Let's see here, then I guess, last but not least, man, Saturday night sounds, I can't believe, Mr. Blaskes didn't bring that up, but anyway, probably, I'm going to say 3,000 people, it was an amazing crowd, people loved it. It was a, it was a great band and great weather and great, you know, great company, so it was a great night to be out at the amphitheater. So with that, we'll call it a night. Right before 10 o'clock.